Welcome everyone to the October 11th Board of Education meeting at the Phoenicia School. This is a call to order. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, District Clerk, if you could please take roll call.
Trustee Sherry.
Present.
Trustee Bishop.
Present.
Trustee Story.
Here.
Trustee Wallace.
Here.
Trustee Ramondo.
Present.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite Liz Fallow to come up and speak to the board.
So, welcome to the Phoenicia Elementary School. Welcome back. On behalf of the Phoenicia School, we'd like to thank you for all you do, not just during Board Appreciation Week, but throughout the school year. Your support of our entire school district on behalf of the Antioa community is amazing. Your work can be difficult, but it makes a difference in the lives of our students, and we appreciate that because this education provides them with the opportunities that they need. With that said, we've had an exciting start to the school year. Just our opening days began with our new illustrative math program being introduced, continuing to support our reading programs, our SEL work with the Morningside Institute, our teachers and our special class programs received additional training and direct instruction methods in both ELA and math, and as we continue to meet the needs of all of our students and working hard towards that goal. This list goes on and on. We've also welcomed back Max Morris, who got to greet you this evening. So, we're very excited to continue to have Max in the building. Our PTA is, as always, is working hard, and they welcomed back our teachers, faculty, staff, and bus drivers with a welcome-back breakfast that everybody enjoyed on the 23rd. Then, our students and families enjoyed their welcome-back picnic on the 30th out back on our beautiful property. We truly enjoyed our first real open house in quite a while, welcoming it just seems like it's been lifetimes since we had so many families in our building. We're still hearing from so many that they're just thrilled to walk through our hallways for the first time for some. Families just filled our hallways, visited our classrooms, and made face-to-face connections with their children's teachers. It really, it was wonderful to see. Our recycling challenge continues. I don't know how many of you have seen our current first month's results, just shy of 1,000 pounds in the first month. So, it's amazing. We have about six community partners who are dropping off at our schools, and the kids are just, they've hit the ground running, to say the least. We've got some upcoming events. Tomorrow's our Picture Day, very excited. We are planning to enjoy the PTA's Fall Festival in the garden, planned for next week. Last year, the students got to plant flower bulbs for the spring and garlic, and they ran some activities, so we're excited to see what this year looks like. And then, we have our kindergarten and first grade classes, who will be enjoying a field trip to Kelders Farm. Again, welcome back to field trips. While, some second graders will be learning about our community, and they'll be taking a walking field trip and visiting places right here, like our library, the bank, the post office, our local community. Spots are hosting our students. And with that, trunk or treat will be hosted on the 29th here in our parking lot, followed by the costume parade that the community puts on. So, there's lots of upcoming events and fun stuff that's happening every day. So, with that, welcome this evening, and thank you again for all you do.
Thank you so much, Principal Fallow. Does anybody have questions for Principal Fallow? No? Thank you so much for having us. Okay, item 3.01, the assessment of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of September 27th, 2022. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Ramondo. Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And item 4.01, Student Representative Noel Crandell will give a report.
Good evening. So, recently in student government, we began a reoccurring article in the school newspaper that will function as an update for our constituents. We hope that this will increase outreach, as well as transparency, and encourage involvement. I was very inspired by your newsletter. The outside initiative was held up by some payment technicalities, but after working through those, we hope to hold a planting day in the spring in conjunction with the environmental club, as well as any other volunteers from the community. It is a personal goal of mine to complete this project this year and implement the outdoors into our education. Student government also set our goals for the 2022-2023 school year. As representatives of our class, we agree that it is critical to us that we do our utmost to encourage a learning environment that ensures each student feels safe, both mentally and physically, that each student is given the proper resources in order, resources in order to not only academically thrive, but also socially thrive, and to guarantee that the voices of the student body are being heard. Throughout the high school, yearbook distributed senior packets, which contain superlatives, questionnaires, and information regarding senior will submission, which also comes with a reminder that all students who have not had their senior portrait taken must schedule an appointment with Ms. Casey. The GSA is holding a celebration for National Coming Out Day on Thursday, the 13th. Beller Bash held its first official meeting, in which they elected representatives and outlined fundraisers for the year. Beller Bash is an event post-graduation that functions to ensure that graduates have a drug and alcohol-free night, and as well as many of our state sports teams are holding senior nights.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Noel. Does anybody have questions for Noel? Noel, do you have any questions for us?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Okay, Superintendent District News, item 5.01.
Good evening. As Principal Fallow mentioned, this is upcoming School Board Appreciation Week. It's actually October 17th through 21st. Since this falls in between our meetings, I would like to also take a moment to recognize our board for the hard work that is inherent in this position. We currently have the benefit of having the full spectrum of experience on the board, which allows us to have historical knowledge and understanding of issues that have passed or that are longstanding, while also having fresh perspectives from trustees who are newer to the role. Every one of you has already shown that you are working for the improvement of the district and have been diligently working to move forward together. This is a job that requires much more time and effort than is typically seen, because what happens at the board table is preceded by hours of reading and collaborating to prepare for each meeting. There's training required and opportunities for professional development that are available, but of course, none of that is compensated, and all of it requires time away from family and career responsibilities. So, thank you all for your hard work and dedication to the students of Antioa and the entire school community. And this is actually a great tag-on to that. I recently received an email from a colleague whom I have never met. The superintendent of Watkins Glen Central School District wrote to me and said, and I'm quoting their email, "At a recent Board of Education retreat, the board and I worked on creating operational norms. We looked at districts all over New York and the country. We settled on the Antioa format as what we thought was most applicable to what we were trying to do and communicate to current and future board members and to our community. Thank you for doing this great work and sharing it. Kudos to the board." I thought that was really nice, out of kind of nowhere. We also recently received a lovely email from someone. It came to Ms. Simmons, and the email states, "I'm not sure who to send this message to, but I'm hoping you can relay it to your athletic trainer." This person's husband fell at Saratoga Springs High School after the Tupperlake-Antioa football game, and our trainer stepped right up and checked on him to make sure he was okay. She was very professional and thorough, and when they returned home, they took him to the ER, which she suggested, and he has a fractured elbow. She wanted to just let us know that we are very fortunate to have such caring staff and to let her know how much we appreciate all that she did to help them. And we did commend her personally, but I thought that was worth sharing with everyone here. Just an update on communications for the work the committee's been doing. We did have a 911 call box installed outside of this building, and now, thanks to our Director of Technology, we do have a Wi-Fi network inside the building. We have also completed the new family information packet, and it has been fully translated into Spanish, and it's being sent to home with all current kindergarten families, and the PTAs have also received a digital copy. And we are working on reviving the Antioa app as well. Our Director of Technology is working with Black Board, who is our website host, so hopefully, we will soon have that available in the App Store again. Our next Superintendent's Conference Day is scheduled for October 19th. There will be no school for students on this day, but our faculty and staff will have a full day of staff development. Some of the offerings, and it's a very broad catalog, but some of the offerings include a new cohort of staff at the high school being trained by Morningside, additional professional development opportunities for elementary faculty and TA with the new math curriculum, professional development being provided for our nursing staff, professional development in co-teaching, MTSS professional development, and additional training on the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. It's a full day with a lot of options, and I wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Laffin, along with our administrative team, for creating a day with such value. We have had the first of our quarterly meetings with both PTA leadership and town supervisors. Both meetings were very positive, and both groups appreciated the time to get together and share information. On a different note, we were recently contacted because the State Education Department is going through and conducting reviews of spending for districts related to all of the various grants that we have received related to the pandemic. So, they will be monitoring for compliance and providing technical assistance related to programmatic and fiscal requirements for all of the various stimulus funds. So, that would be the SER-1, the GEAR-1, the CHRISA, and SER-2, the GEAR-2, and the ARP. So, our review dates are from April of this school year through November of next school year. It's kind of a big process. So, we will receive our instructions in March. We will have to submit documentation through the online portal from April through June. We will have an onsite visit sometime between July and September, and then hopefully, the process will be completed in November. This will be labor-intensive, but I'm glad that we're in, we're actually in the third group of districts being reviewed out of six or seven. So, the first two groups will provide the reviewers with some familiarity, because it's not always great to be the first group to go through a process like that. But, it's early enough in the process where, if there are recommended modifications, we will be able to make any changes that they require. And lastly, on a very happy note, I have been invited by Ellie Reese of the Woodstock Land Conservancy to serve as a Scarecrow Contestant Judge at the Scarecrow Fest on Saturday. The event will take place from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Como. As with past community events, the Scarecrow Fest will be a celebration for all ages, and it will feature opportunities to engage with the unique environment and culture of Woodstock, while enjoying art-making, friendly, family-friendly activities, local foods, local vendors, and live music. And the aforementioned Scarecrow Contest is where community members are being asked to make scarecrows from sustainably sourced materials, and all proceeds will benefit the Woodstock Land Conservancy and the Como Trails. And the organizers were very pleased to note to me that all three of our elementary school PTAs are participating. So, thank you, PTAs, for representing.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Superintendent McLaren. Does anybody have questions for the superintendent? No? Okay. Before we move on, I just want to welcome Amanda Allison to her first board meeting as the Assistant Superintendent of PPS, and I'm so happy to have you here, and I think everyone feels the same way. Thank you for coming back and for joining us. Okay, item 6.01, Board District News. Does anybody have Board District News to report? Any board members? Nothing? Nobody? Not a thing? Okay. Item 7.01, the board would like to acknowledge the publicly heard comments from the last meeting from Neil Brownell. Thank you, Mr. Brownell. Okay, moving on to public and student comment. The public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public be heard. Please know that we hear you and take all of your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct. Any inaccuracies or misinformation during public be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. And tonight, we have Mr. Brownell on the agenda to be heard.
Is that better? Ah, that's better. Neil Brownell, the crazy inventor. I want to talk about partial information tonight. A friend of mine deliberately gave me partial information about something that I had, where I was in trouble for. And because I only had part of the information, every decision that I made was not only wrong, but it made everything worse. Well, that's not a con. That's a friend who was just trying to do the right thing and did the wrong thing. So, how would I run a con game using partial information in order to get good people to make the wrong decision? Well, Linda and I flew into Birmingham, Alabama. We were going to do something we had never done before, and that was to attend a unity march. This march lasted for two days, the entire celebration. On the day of our march, there were 300 people in another city that was walking through the streets, and I was hoping that the officer would be here. They were walking through the streets saying, "Pigs in a blanket, fry them like bacon." This was national news for days, complete with politicians and one talking head after another telling us how horrible we are, how horrible America is, and the way to fix it was to get rid of the cops. Well, these same con artists chose not to tell you about the meeting that, or the party, I recall, at the meeting that we were at, the celebration, that took two days. And we walked the same route that Martin Luther King walked, but we weren't noticed at all. So, ask yourself, why do the trillion-dollar multinational corporations, along with our con artists in our government, wanting you to make a decision on just that little bit of information, but they didn't tell you anything about anything else? Thank you so very much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Brownell. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? No? Okay. Item 9.01, the superintendent recommends acceptance of a donation totaling $125.14 in cash from Shutterfly LLC to be used to support the Woodstock Elementary Owl Store. The superintendent recommends approval to increase the 2022-2023 budget per the following donations. Shutterfly LLC, $125.14. May I have a first, please? Trustee Taylor?
I'm sorry, can I say one last thing? I missed out one thing. There was 20,000 to 30,000 people at our celebration, but 300 people.
Thank you, Mr. Brownell. Okay, Christie Taylor with a first. May I have a second, please? Trustee Wallace, comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 19.9.02, we received an incredibly generous donation from Barconi's Music in Kingston, and we just wanted to take a minute to thank Janice Barconi for the, for her incredible donation. Rural schools like ours certainly appreciate instruments, and having them donated is really exceptional. We have a lot of children in our music department, and they're going to get tremendous use out of these. So, thank you so much to Janice Barconi for that. Item 9.03, the Board of Education hereby approves the contract for Jennifer Simmons to work as a mentor for the Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop, comments or questions?
How long do you estimate that Ms. Simmons will be working as a mentor? Will it be like a part-time, occasional, once-a-month sort of thing, or do you, what are the hours that you're seeking?
So, the first month about, we are anticipating a two- or three-day-a-week session, kind of commitment, and after that first month, we are going to circle around and discuss how much we anticipate. Once the holidays hit, she will be out of state, and so, any mentoring will be virtual and at the hourly rate. But I think we're kind of in the really critical time right now, where we're winding down the fall season and having to start the winter season. So, this is a great time for them to spend some time together and see how all of that works. But after that first month, I anticipate it's going to decrease rapidly. This contract leaves her available to assist for the rest of the school year, but I think it'll be much less intense and on an as-needed basis after this next month.
Any additional questions, comments? I just want to thank Ms. Simmons for being willing to do this. I think that we are very lucky to have found a new athletic director, and we're even just as lucky that Ms. Simmons has agreed to stay on and mentor that person. She has a tremendous amount of knowledge, and I think it'll really benefit the district. Go ahead.
She should not, and this has been, that language has been added to her contract, but we do not anticipate her spending, having to sleep or be put up in hotels anymore, correct? Or is that?
If she's coming up for
For mentoring.
For days, yes, she will, because she'll be staying with our current director for whatever hours she needs.
Okay. But it's just difficult, because this was, this language is added to a previous contract, so that's why it's reading it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. Okay, we're going to do a second reading on Policy 1512, Public Be Heard. I think that since our last discussion about this, something has changed in that Trustee Bishop attended the conference for board governance?
Officers.
Officers, and learned something that we did not know last time. Do you want to speak to that, Cindy?
Yeah. Trustee Wallace has, you know, provided some revisions to the policy. The only thing that I learned was that pretty much every district board event that was represented at that meeting uses the language that during public be heard, only items that are directly related to the school district or to the specific board agenda that night should be discussed at public be heard. So, that's the language that I think I shared with you, some, the NISBA policy, the recommended NISBA policy as well.
Anybody have questions or comments? Trustee Wallace?
I was, I thought the, the revision that you suggested was thoughtful and would also accomplish what my language, proposed language would do. So, just wanted to say that I thought, thank you for, for bringing that to, doing that research, that investigation. I would encourage this board to, to do that.
Trustee Story?
All right. Question. Who's to say it's relevant? Because I may think one thing is relevant to education, and you may think another. Are we going to have our district clerk, you know, turn around and interrupt people in the middle of them speaking because they don't think it's relevant? I think that wording is something that needs to be more clarified, because everybody's opinion about what's relevant to education could differ. There's no standard, say, this is about education or things like that. So, how are we going to do that?
No, I think that's an excellent point. I mean, I, I think I said last, two weeks ago, that I'm uncomfortable with this for a variety of reasons, but will certainly defer to my colleagues on it. But I would like to make sure that we're being really clear on what the expectations are, because I think it could get really uncomfortable. And I think that Trustee Story's point is a very valid one. My opinions about education may be very different from yours, or from Trustee Wallace's, or Trustee Hemingway Lynch. So, you know, I think we do need to take a look at this and figure out how we're going to word it in such a way that it's clear to people. We don't want to discourage participation. We want to encourage it. So, how can we come up with wording that encourages participation that is clear about what we expect? Trustee Wallace?
Well, I don't think that we are talking about, I think we were, were using language that it would be a guideline, a best practice, rather than a dictate. And so, by saying that it's a, a, something, a behavior to model, I think that makes it very clear to folks who might want to speak, that it's, it's not that they're going to be cut off or that there's a hook, you know, that comes in like vaudeville, but rather, that we hope that people respect our time and take our time seriously. So, I think it reiterates that point.
Trustee Story?
And see, and that's where I think we have to be more, there's certain cases that you can't, like in here, it says, you can't say a specific staff member's name. There's certain reasons that that's worded that way, so people know it. But by saying the word "relevant to education," that can be so vast, you know, that you can't say, well, you need to be relevant to education. Well, I think X, Y, and Z is relative to education. You don't. So, that's why we're, this is a policy that needs to be more specific and not so general and...
Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I just found the actual language. So, the NISBA policy reads, "Speakers may comment on any matter related to district business, any agenda item, or matters related to agenda items specifically, or district matters generally, depending on the public comment section." It's wordy, I know.
And it says, "Depending on the public comment section," which comes back to this policy. So, it reverts itself right back into it.
Yeah, I mean, I hear, I hear what Trustee Wallace is saying, and I know that there's a lot of agreement for that on the board in general. I, I do feel concerned about the wording, and I agree with Trustee Story that, that I think that we're putting the community in a difficult position in trying to read our minds. And perhaps it's as simple as calling it a best practice, but looking for wording that does not specifically say "relevant," because I, I agree with Trustee Story that that word, the connotation of that word is that other people are to assume what we consider to be relevant. And I would hate to, to get into that kind of a, of a contest with somebody. because I have a 14-year-old. What's relevant to me is not relevant to most people. So, I don't know if we want to take some more time and wordsmith this a little bit better. If, Trustee Wallace, if you want to play with it a little bit, or if you guys want to vote on it as it is. But I, that is the part that I would like to see different personally. Trustee Bishop, did you have something?
I, no, but I, I just realized that the, the language that Trustee Wallace was recommending is where it says "relevant to education." The language in the NISBA policy does not say "relevant to education." So, you know, I mean-
Somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, it's somewhere in the middle.
Does it use the word-
Could you read it again?
Related?
Sure. And I'm kind of, I'm putting things together, because they leave blanks to kind of fill in how many minutes, how many, you know, how many, how many public be heard sessions? Because some districts have two. They have one in the beginning of the meeting, and then one later in the meeting. And, you know, because some districts have a lot of audience members, we typically do not, so we don't necessarily need to. I know we did at one time. So, the, the language that I'm looking at in the NISBA policy says, "Speakers may comment on any matter related to district business, any agenda item, or matters related to agenda items specifically or district matters generally, depending on the public comment section." And I think that last piece is about, it, would it be in the beginning of the meeting or at the end of the meeting? Because some districts have a specific to the school district in the beginning, and then more general at the end.
So, if we eliminated the last three words or four words, it would be more relevant to this discussion. I certainly would be fine with, with those, that policy, those, that wording. I'd be fine, in my opinion. So, I'm perfectly happy if you voted on that.
There are board members we haven't heard from yet. So, I'd like to see if anybody else has, has an opinion before we... Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Thank you both. I, I agree, and I was just curious if you were to replace "relevant" with "related to," is it not the same? And maybe less wordy?
Yeah. Related to. You know, I do, I think that it depends on what we're trying to accomplish. Because, as I said, I think that what's related to education, for me, may be very different than what's related to education for Ms. Laffin. You know, because we have very different roles in the world. So, I just want us to each think about what we're trying to accomplish with this and decide wording that matches our goal. If our goal is to ensure that people who are coming to speak to us are talking about things that are related to the Ontario School District or to education in general, I think that's comfortable for all of us. As I said, I'm not comfortable with any of this in general. I feel like as public servants, we kind of are in a position where we need to hear the public. But I do recognize that, that I'm in the minority on that. So, I, I'm kind of curious what everybody else thinks. Trustee Taylor?
I don't look into that word "relevant" too deeply. I'm not like, you know, really picking it apart. "Related to" is fine for me. Relevant or pertains to education. I mean, using common sense, you know, which, you know, I'm okay using, you know. I wouldn't cut anybody off, but we can ask very nicely to, you know, keep on topic. Let's, you know, keep it in the scope of the Ontario School District.
Trustee Ramondo?
So, my thoughts on this are very similar to yours, Trustee Sheri, is that we, we would go down a rabbit hole, I think, pretty quickly if we start to try to contain what people are going to say in three minutes. And I know it's three minutes of our lives, but I think it's important for people to be heard. And as you said, we are public servants, and that's part of why we're here. And relevancy, as you, almost all of you have said, is what's relevant to you may not be relevant to me. But we do all care, and sometimes relevancy translates, and care translates in a different way. So, personally, I think that the sentence could be left out, because we could just hope that people come here with the intent to do the right thing and use our time wisely. And again, if they don't, that's, that's sad, but it's three minutes. Thanks.
So, perhaps if we change "relevant" to "pertains to," as Ms. Taylor suggested, Trustee Story, did you have?
I honestly, as I said last time, I'm not in favor of putting this in there, because again, as you have said, and Trustee Ramondo just said, that we need the public to come out here, and we are elected officials. And they need to be able to speak to us and have their, to be heard. Not only is it their students, but our taxpayers. That is who we're ultimately responsible for, because they are the ones who vote our budget up or down. They are the ones who vote us into these seats. So, it's not just the students. Our taxpayers could have issues with stuff that they need help with, that they want us to be. So, they, we're, like it or not, we're elected officials, and we have to, people are not always going to like what we do and say, and we have to sit here and listen to it, because it's their opportunity to speak to us about it.
I just want to draw a distinction. Criticism is perfectly fair and reasonable, and I agree. We should be willing to hear the harshest criticism about what we do and what, the work that we do. However, when there's filibustering that goes on, when it's utterly unrelated to the work that we do, and I think, you know, it's like that old Supreme Court justice who said, you know, I see, when, you know, I don't know how you identify obscenity, but I know it when I see it. It's sort of like that. You know, I, I know when something pertains or is related or relevant to education or the, the work that we do. So, I'm not saying that we shy away from any criticism. Bring it on, but bring it on about what we do.
Okay, I feel like we're at a little bit of an impasse, because I don't see, I don't see that we have votes to pass this tonight. So, what I'd like to do is take a little bit of time. Trustee Wallace, if you want to work on this again, and I'll work on it again, and see if we can find some middle ground, we can work on it together and bring it to the board, maybe, maybe give it out to the board, not for discussion prior to the meeting, but so that everyone has it prior to the meeting. And, you know, before then, if individually you want to reach out to me with any questions or concerns, I would certainly welcome that, so that as I'm kind of working on this, we can find a middle ground that's comfortable for everyone, because I don't actually think we're there right now. Anybody, questions or comments? Are we all in agreement on that? Trustee Story?
First to table.
Thank you. Second to table? Trustee Taylor? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Well, let's talk about the next fun thing, which is goals. So, Trustee Taylor and I spent some time working on this. I think as we had all discussed, everybody has a copy, if you could pull it out, and it is on Board Docs for anybody who might be watching. It's not on Board Docs? I think it is on Board Docs? It's not on Board Docs? Okay, then it will be on Board Docs. So, the, the discussion that we had two weeks ago was to look at the goals that were not accomplished in 2018, 2019 because of COVID, and to kind of refresh them a little bit post-COVID. You know, taking what we had learned over the last three years and kind of reinvigorating these goals a little bit. I took into account with Ms. Taylor the feedback that we had gotten from our colleagues and tried to kind of incorporate most everything that it seemed as if we had agreed to at the board table two weeks ago. So, if everybody could just take a minute, and I guess I will read it out loud for anyone who's following at home. So, these are the proposed goals. Support the development of a long-term district-wide plan that strategically addresses educational goals, declining enrollment, educator and staff shortages, facilities, community impact, budget and cost-saving measures. Explore improving educational opportunities for our middle school students by moving to a sixth to eighth-grade middle school. Accomplish this through input from superintendent recommendations, a board ad hoc committee, shared decision-making committee, and community outreach. Item two, support efforts to foster a more positive culture and climate within the district, including the exploration of a post-COVID culture and climate survey. Initiatives to increase school spirit, ongoing diversity education for students and staff. Commitment to furthering restorative justice training and practices, continuing to prioritize student and staff mental health. A sustained effort to better publicize the district's accomplishments. Foster a collaborative and responsive relationship with the community through social media, website overhaul, and increased communication to include the development of a board newsletter. Continued support for district-wide initiatives that address housing and food security as well as increased access to broadband and cellphone coverage. Item three, support the superintendent in increasing student knowledge and engagement in civics, K-8 through 12. And item four, support the continued review of homework reform, including the revision of board's homework policy with input from all stakeholders. So, obviously, that's a lot. And, you know, I think it's a lofty goal, multi-tiered goals. But it's hard to not feel like they're all really important at this point. So, does anybody have any input? Questions, comments? Trustee Story?
I thought we were dropping the fourth goal. I thought that we had decided that last time that-
I don't, I didn't feel like we agreed to it. And I, the only reason I left it there was as a point of conversation, because I could not remember if that had ever been accomplished, and I did not find anywhere that it had been. And I just left it there as a point of conversation. I'm, I'm, I do feel like the board's homework policy probably does need to be reviewed and dealt with, but, but I'm not sure that that's something that we want to take on this year. So, I left it there just as a point of discussion, not as something that needed to, you know, to be part of this. Go ahead, Trustee Bishop?
I, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any reason not to review the homework policy, but I don't know that we could, you know, make it a comprehensive, you know, it's really, this sounds more like a project which would involve, you know, like stakeholder meetings and things like that. It sounds like, it just sounds like a lot to me. It's much more than just revising a policy.
It's a big job. That probably just starts with a review of the policy and then a discussion. But it does not have to be incorporated into this year's goals. I mean, personally, I feel like Assistant Superintendent Laffin and Superintendent McLaren are much more, with their administrative staff, are, you know, much more qualified to talk about homework and homework goals than the Board of Education. So, I carried it over, because it was a 2018-19 goal, but not with the intent of sticking us into something that we don't really belong in. Sarah, did you have a question?
Thank you. Trustee Sheri, I would completely agree. That was my note, which is, I think this is out of scope. I think it's more appropriate for the staff and teachers to weigh in on it. And certainly, as part of the policy committee, if there's a recommendation, well, we can certainly look at that. But I would suggest we take that off. I also had some other comments, if it's appropriate, or we can just, yeah.
Well, let me, let's just finish.
Focus on that.
Do we all, are we all in agreement that we want to take off item four? Yeah, okay, so scrap item four. And then, Trustee Lynch, if you had some questions and comments about one through three?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work that went into this, Trustee Taylor and Trustee Sheri. I really appreciate it. I, I do have some concerns, however, about, I feel like it's getting out ahead of some work that needs to be done, particularly specific recommendations about the middle school in particular. No doubt that the, all grades in all schools need to be looked at, but I'm, I'm just concerned that it's getting out ahead of input from all the stakeholders. And so, I would respectfully request that we take a different approach. For example, in the first goal, I would think about supporting the development of a long-term district-wide plan that strategically meets, addresses, you know, goals in a rural community. Full stop. We don't need to talk about what some perceive as, you know, whether it's declining enrollment or staff shortages or, you know, these things certainly feel like fact today, but they can change. And I know that there are some in the community who feel very strongly about the fact that the facilities in particular and other things, there needs to be more input into that discussion, and that particularly around declining enrollment, that there hasn't been enough to encourage more enrollment proactively. And thinking about other schools that have started in the area that have done a great job at attracting some of Ontario's students to that school. There's other things that need to be considered before we are specific about, I think, the factors that go into defining a, a plan in a rural community. So, I would just suggest that we talk about, for example, facilities utilization and a changing climate, or, you know, stewarding budget dollars effectively, things of that nature that are a little bit more, words that I think will give similar meaning, but potentially don't inadvertently share opinions and/or foresee an outcome that we haven't yet done all the homework to, to address.
Trustee Story?
I want to address the, the comment about the, you know, the sixth grade moving down. Curriculum-wise, middle school curriculum is, is based out for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Because our sixth graders are currently in a different building, our curriculum can, is, got to get squeezed in. Our whole middle school curriculum has to get squeezed into two years. So, that also, for any special ed students, they cannot take a chorus or a music, a music, because they do not have enough room in their schedule because of curriculum-wise. So, this, there is a, there is reasons why that was always bringing the sixth graders down to the middle school, because we need that for curriculum-wise.
So, just to, go ahead, Trustee Taylor.
Sorry, I was not on the board at the time, but this is going back like 10 years when we moved the buildings and separated Bennett and did the K through six, you know, whatever. That was, as far as I knew it as a parent, that was already discussed and looked into, and the groundwork was already done. I think we didn't properly utilize that information, and now it's kind of been stagnant. So, I think we're actually behind the ball by 10 years, and we should already be done with this, and it should have happened 10 years ago.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just want to be really clear about one thing. This goal was, this was part of the goal, because it is an actual genuine issue that we are having in Ontario. You know, the, the inability for our educators and for our administrative staff to try to cram three-years' worth of curriculum into two years is unfair to the children and also unfair to the staff. So, I don't see this as being something that's necessarily debatable. It's just very clear, and what's been shared, you know, by staff across both of the elementary schools and the middle school. So, that was why that was added in here, because it's, it's not actually a question at this point. It's, it's what's being said. You know, this is a huge roadblock for this district. And I was not on the board either. I don't think anybody was when that decision was made. And I can't speak to why they made the decision in the first place. I can only say that today, which is what we're dealing with, it does not seem to be working from an educational perspective, from what I've understood in just the opinion of my own. And as to your other points, Trustee Hemingway Lynch, I think that we would be doing our community a disservice to not be honest about what we are facing today. These are the goals today. They can be totally different goals next year. I mean, it would not be great, but, you know, the goal can change. But I think that these are the issues that we're facing today that are the reason that we need to come up with a long-term district-wide plan. We have unforeseen, unimaginable staff shortages, things that we've never thought that we would deal with in this district. Anybody who's grown up in this area or has been here for any length of time would say, "Ontario is the place that teachers want to work." And we never had trouble staffing this school in the way that we're having trouble now. So, staffing shortages are impacting every building in our district and causing our administrators to work, let's say, four times as hard as they should have to to fill these positions. to work, let's say, four times as hard as they should have to to fill these positions, and putting untold strain on the educators that we do have. So, that's, that, to me, is incredibly important. Declining enrollment, I think we should acknowledge it so that we can fix it. You know, I think you're right, there are other, other schools that are doing a better job, perhaps, than Antioa is, but we can't fix it if we don't acknowledge it. You know, whether it's marketing, or selling ourselves, or however we want to look at it, we had a huge increase in population, and yet, our numbers continue to decline. So, you know, for me, keeping these things in here is being honest with the people that we're representing. This goal is designed for this reason. These are the reasons that we need a long-term plan. And, you know, I feel, I feel like it's important to be honest about that.
Just maybe quickly, I want to make sure, I don't think you're, I don't, I know you're being honest, so thank you for that. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we're not honest. I think we need to think about it as a five-year goal, though, and so, things can change over five years, and so, I just think it's more, it's helpful to think about the challenges to a rural community in, in a way that doesn't begin to, I guess, bring up other things like you all have shared, which I also happen to agree with, but not everybody has that same information. And so, when you put something like that on paper, for the first time, this is, you know, we've seen it, for example, there may be families who want to know more about that information and, and feel like they're not going to be engaged in a process if it's a foregone conclusion. So, I'm just suggesting we think about wording it differently, not to be, not honest, but to be clear about looking at the middle school and all of its challenges from an achievement perspective, from a staffing perspective, and all of those things, and not to, to put those who may want to engage in the process feeling like it's a foregone conclusion.
We get the community engagement that we need to start this process is by being honest, I, just my opinion, but by being honest about how we got here in the first place. I want Phoenisha parents to be involved in the conversation. I want Bennett parents to be involved, middle school parents to be involved, and they need to understand why we're doing this. Why is this a goal? It's a goal because we have these incredible challenges, and we are not the only school, and not all of them are rural. You know, there are a lot of urban schools that are also dealing with huge staffing shortages, huge facilities problems, you know, a lot of the same issues that we have here at Antioa. I feel very strongly that rural schools and urban schools are different in a lot of ways, but in the things that are happening post-COVID, they're not all that different. So, for me, the way to get the community engaged is for them to understand why we're creating this goal. Why are we here in the first place? And again, you know, I'm up for reelection, there's a couple of us that are. This goal could be different next year. You know, it changes every year. So, you know, there's a lot that can change between now and next year, and if we find that this goal has not been effective this year, and that we, people are not engaged, you know, we can change it next year, for sure. But that was my, my reasoning. Trustee Taylor.
To speak to the declining enrollment, we're, could actually be doing the children a disservice by not having the sixth grade moved up to the middle school, because other bigger schools like Kingston or some of the others offer more classes and more extracurricular activities that they could do in those schools, because their middle school actually is sixth, seventh, eighth. So, we're actually hindering them in a way because we're keeping them in the elementary school.
Well, I think using the word explore, which is in, in, in this document, or this, this clause, does make it clear that we're, it's not a fait accompli, it's more of a, a, something that we're investigating. So, I'm, I would, I would say maybe we need to even be more blatant in, in the fact that we're, 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 you know, it's not a foregone conclusion.
The last sentence is, the last sentence says, accomplish this through input from the superintendent recommendations, board ad hoc committee, shared decision-making committee, and community outreach. Is there anything that we could add to that sentence to make it abundantly clear that we are going to be actively seeking community input rather than just outreach? Because there's a difference in those two words. Outreach is us pushing into the community, input is us receiving from the community. So, maybe...
I have two words that could maybe help. Accomplish this, oh, sorry.
Just, simple, and input. Just input.
Maybe accomplish this exploration, again, repeating, or something like that, you know, or this, this investigation through. So, it's clear that it's not a decision that's already made.
Okay, we haven't heard from trustee Ramondo. I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have anything that you want to add?
I think that being honest is critical in this activity, in this agenda that we have to have happen inevitably at some point. And I agree that putting input in is incredibly important, because I think when we lay it out like this, if someone has a question just regarding declining enrollment, they know they can come to us. They may know about the other things, but they might not know our numbers, or staff shortages, and they may ask why, and they may ask what they can do to help, or say, who are you missing, because I know some people that might want to come to New York. I don't know, probably not. So, that's my input.
Thank you, trustee Ramondo. Anybody else, before we move on to item two? Trustee Superintendent McLaren.
I did just want to add, in terms of declining enrollment, that was part of our discussion with the town supervisors, just in, they were stressing their shared frustration with availability of housing for families. They all expressed that short-term rentals have had such a negative impact, and they are all doing everything they can to slow that particular portion of their towns, and they're trying to do everything they can to encourage long-term rentals so that families can come here, because there just is no housing, even if, even if we were in a different position in terms of marketing the district. There just is not enough housing to support a real influx of families. So, I, I did want to give them all credit. They were all wonderful, we had a great conversation, and they were all very actively working on this issue.
Thank you, superintendent McLaren. I, I think that, you know, it's impossible to look at declining enrollment without also talking about how many families we've lost because of housing. It's just, we're at critical mass. Anybody else on item one? All right, item two. So, there was, my understanding is that there was a culture and climate survey done pre-COVID, and I, I guess there's just part of me that really feels like that's just not relevant anymore, or may not be relevant, is what I should say, that things have changed so much in the last couple of years, that I think it would be worth it to us to do that again. I'm sure that that information is very interesting, it would lend itself to the conversation, but I would be interested really in, in doing this again post-COVID. And that was why I, I left it in there, even though I knew that it had been done a couple of years ago. You know, I think that a lot of this stuff is stuff that we've, that we, the district, has made a lot of headway in, you know, restorative justice, mental health. We certainly have one of the highest ratios of mental health providers to students, probably in the tri-county area, for sure, and Ulster County. And I really, I really think that we're doing a very good job with that. But I left it in here, because I think it's an ongoing conversation, and I think it's just vitally important to keep having the conversation and keeping it relevant. What else? You know, we're, we are definitely doing diversity education for students and staff, publicizing the district's accomplishments, fostering a collaborative and responsive relationship with the community through social media, website overhaul. These are all things that we've really talked about. The goal allows us to really put the energy we need into doing the work, and to partnering with the superintendent and her team to get the work done. Trustee Wallace.
Yes, first of all, I want to commend the efforts to teach, have diversity training. I, I would say that diversity recruitment is also something that would be helpful to, to emphasize in this, in that sentence. There, you know, there are probably some, some initiatives that could, could help in terms of staff and students to, to increase diversity.
The last sentence, that's really not in the board's purview of it.
Well, I think it just says continued support, which is, you know, having conversation.
But how are, but it's not, we, we have no control over the housing, you know, food insecurity, the, the housing shortage, the board, that, you know, this is, that has, we want to help as much as we can, but the board ourselves as a goal, we can't do that. We don't have the power to do that.
I don't think it's about power, I think it's about providing support. So, just as, just as superintendent...
But we can't spend money for this stuff, because it would be gift of taxpayers' funds, stuff like that.
We're not, we're not talking about spending money. I'm sorry, trustee Story, go ahead, finish your thought, and then trustee Bishop.
It's trying to support it, it's not in the board's purview, that's what I'm trying to say.
I disagree, only because I think that while I was not on the legislative action, action committee last year, I was on the communications committee, and because of that, trustee Salem and, and interim superintendent Corsones and I got to meet with Kevin Cahill, Michelle Hinchi, and we were able to talk about all of those things and kind of really put a bug in their ear. And I think that's an annual meeting that can happen, and I, I do think it's, it's not something that we can make happen, but it's, it's a conversation that we can keep going, so that they don't forget how, you know, how dire the situation is here, especially in terms of, of housing and food insecurity.
Trustee Ramondo.
Maybe we just think of a different word other than the word support, even though I under, but I can see how you could think financial, it could go, you could go to different places when you see that word, so maybe we could just, and capture what you're saying into a couple additional words. I don't know them.
I look at that last sentence, especially the broadband and cellphone coverage is the superintendent's main goal for the past few years. So, that is our purview, to support her and what she wants. And that also might help with enrollment, because if people feel like they have no way to emergency services, you're limiting who will be safe to live in some of these areas, especially with ambulance, you know, how fast they, you know, report to any kind of emergency or anything like that. And then, the district's initiatives with the food security, something as simple as not giving financial support, but maybe being a vital partner in the food, like, the food banks to help reach the children and the families that might need a little extra help, or going home on the weekend with a backpack full of food, or something like that. We're not financially doing anything, but we're just like a, the middle man between the community, which is, and the students, which is what we all signed up for.
Trustee Lynch.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I, I guess my overall thought on this particular goal is just that I think we need a lot more specificity, and so, that would support what you're saying, Kristy, but specifically, you know, what are, in terms of what is achievable and what, what is in our purview, but also, what, what are we trying to do this year and in the next five years? What is the goal? I think instead of just listing what feels like a really smart and important list of things under this second goal, I think we really need to push ourselves to be much more specific, so that we can measure our progress. So, if that means, to your point Cindy, having an annual meeting with our legislators on these three issues and maintaining a drumbeat around those three issues over the next five years, that's much more specific than, or, you know, whatever it is, specifically, you know, it doesn't have to be that, but I'm just saying, in general, can we put some more specificity to each of these points?
Trustee Wallace.
Maybe, to, maybe, by adding again the word student food security, that might address trustee Story's concern to some extent, perhaps?
It doesn't have to do with student insecu, food insecurity, it comes down to, if we do for one student, we have to do for all students. We can't pick and choose it. So, it's, it comes down to the gift of taxpayer funds, and that we can't do. That's why we have to, when we turn around and dispose of something, we have to send it off to an auction. There's, there's rules why we have to do certain things, so...
But, for instance, let's assume, as, as like a, an example, free lunch for all students was a policy that we decided to investigate. That would not be a, a misuse of, a gift of taxpayer funds, right, but would still address potentially food insecurity among students. So, that's the, I mean, I'm just saying, if there was...
So, I, I just want to be really clear about something. My, my goal in adding this line here was not to identify students who need housing or food security, but to support the superintendent and the administration in doing the work that is necessary for us to have a secure foundation for our district, and that includes food security and housing security. We cannot address these other issues, our staffing shortages, our declining enrollment, our facilities issues, because we can't find people to come work at the district, you know, all of this has to do with housing security. I think that we would be neglectful in leaving this out. I am not suggesting that we put taxpayer funds to it, I want to be really clear about that. I'm not suggesting that the district itself can solve this problem, but I think it's vitally important that we support the superintendent and the administration in addressing these foundational district issues, and that we also take on some of the work through the advocacy committee in meeting with Senator Hinchi and whomever is elected in November, because I had a conversation with Michelle Hinchi at the library fair, and we spent a half an hour talking about housing security. I did not represent the school board, I spoke as a constituent, and it was an incredibly important conversation. And it is absolutely, in my opinion, a conversation that the Board of Education of the Antioa School District should be involved in. I am not suggesting that we put money towards it, I'm suggesting that we put time towards it, and that we support superintendent McLaren in putting time towards it. Trustee Ramondo.
I thought of a word. A conduit? We could be a conduit, continued, continuing to be a conduit for open discussion for district-wide initiatives. Just a thought.
Would it change the meaning to use a different phrase? When you say district-wide initiatives, it does imply that these are initiatives that I'm going to work on solving? Is there a different way to say it? Like continued support for conversation, or continued, I'm not sure where to go with it, but to, to call it a district-wide initiative?
Even district-wide concerns? Something simple like that?
Right.
Well, I just want to be clear, because I, it, it is an initiative of yours this year.
It, it's a, it's something that I'm...
The broadband coverage.
Definitely advocating for, but I, I don't think it's within my power to fix it.
So, maybe it's district-wide advocacy?
Yes.
District-wide advocacy, are we comfortable with that? Yes? Yes?
So, I'm just, like, looking at item two, and I'm actually seeing, one, two, like, four or five separate goals in that, in that passage. And I feel like it's, it's almost an impossible, this goal as, as it's written, even if, as we're fine-tuning it, is, it's a lot of different things that are put together in, in one overarching goal. But I don't really know how we can call it a goal. It's, you know, it, like, I'm looking at support efforts to foster a more positive culture, and the next sentence or so, and then, next is ongoing diversity education for students and staff, commitment to further restorative justice, and so on, through mental health, and then, a sustained effort to better publicize the district's accomplishment through the words board newsletter, and then finally, continue... continue advocacy to support, you know, for the district. It's just, they're, they're all really important things. They're all, you know, great goals, but I don't think it really all goes together. And I don't know how it could ever be accomplished as a goal.
Well, I think that the goal itself is to support efforts to foster a more positive and culture climate within the district, period. So the goal that they had in 2018 and 2019 was to address the thing that, that we've been talking about for years about Ontario and that there is a distinct culture and climate here that needs to be addressed. And that in order for this district to continue to move forward, there's some work that needs to be done. So the goal itself is to support efforts to foster a more positive culture and climate within the district, period. And then the things that follow are kind of the things that are already happening here. These are, these are things that are already happening and I think we need to be clear about that. These are not things that we're creating or that we are instructing the superintendent to start. These are things that are happening within our district already. And the goal itself is to support those efforts, to be available to the superintendent and her team to support the efforts that are being made. And the only thing that I see in here that we might, the two things that I see in here that we might have an active role in would be working on a new culture and climate survey so that next year, the board might decide to do something with that information. And the advocacy work. Those are the only two action items I really see in here for us, other than supporting the superintendent and her team in continuing the efforts that they've been making. That was how I saw this goal. But I'm happy to, to take it out. I'm happy to reword it or have someone else reword it, you know, whatever you guys want to do.
Looking at both of these goals, number one and number two, and number one in itself is a Hercules and task that it's going to take thing. And then we throw all of the, I agree with trustee Bishop, there are multiple, multiple goals in number two. One goal, but there's multiple processes in there that, things. But there's a lot of stuff that you want done in that one goal.
Not that I want done.
It's the way that's written, it's saying.
Right, but it's not me. This is the board. So we, what I hear everybody saying is that we should focus on number one, so we can take out number two completely, or we can just strike everything after support efforts to foster a more positive culture and climate within the district. Although I do think that the culture and climate survey is something that we could take on. Trustee Wallace.
Or we could break it up a little more and, and where you have a little more, two is specifically, rather than it, you know, be a little clearer on each item is what I think I heard from trustee Bishop.
What I heard from trustee Bishop was that, that this is too much. And that's what I'm hearing from trustee Story as well. So I, I want to just be clear that I don't see these as action items. And I, I see it as, as fostering a certain environment in this district that I think is really important. Go ahead, trustee Taylor.
I agree with you that I don't think they're new goals. I think it's just continuing what we're already doing to improve the district. I don't know if it would be better or worse to change the language of the entire paragraph, something as simple as saying, continue to actively improve the safety and security of our Ontario students and families by working with the superintendent. Like, make it super simple. We're not doing anything new. It's stuff that's already going on in the district. We're just actively keeping it going and improving the lives of our families.
Trustee Story.
And I'm liking what you just said very quickly, better over this, because again, we need to have the broader goal because then the superintendent makes her goals off of ours. So we need to work in conjunction with that. Because this one, this, number one is going to be time-consuming on itself. That's going to be a long, lot of meetings and stuff like that. So.
Trustee Bishop. Trustee Sarah, Sarah Hemingway Lynch.
Could I make a recommendation that the first goal stands to support, you know, a long-term plan and that it includes the list that's in number two? That the long-term plan addresses these issues that we find to be important and continue to champion.
Trustee Bishop.
I actually, I wasn't going to suggest that, but I, I, I agree that that's a good suggestion. I was, trustee Sherry, after you kind of pointed out to me, what I, what I should have seen was that, yes, there is just one goal there. And I think that if, if we reword some of that, and, and I do want to hear from the superintendent as well because this is, you know, this is a lot. But if, if we reworded it to say that these are ongoing initiatives, that these are, these are not new initiatives. We're supporting initiatives that are already, you know, in, in some, in some way started or are in, being acted upon. But I'm wondering how superintendent McLaren feels about it.
I think the first goal is going to be a very major undertaking. I think the, the list in goal two, I think most of those things are certainly things that we are working on or continuing to work on. I think a post-COVID culture and climate survey would, would likely be something that the board could be looking for, but that the administration would work on with possibly a survey company. I think there are a lot of really great culture and climate surveys out there. And we did, I believe we worked with Scope a couple of years ago to, to kind of do that. But if you, if you really want the administrators to take ownership of it and work with their building level teams, then it's going to be something that they're going to want to implement so that they can have a real, that real insight into what data they're, they're looking for and hoping to get and, and data that will be useful for us in terms of programming and providing additional resources to our students. So there are a lot of things in there, but if it's more supporting and continuing to support initiatives that are already happening, then those are things that we can keep working on. But then the real new work will be done in support of goal number one. Did that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you captured kind of what trustee Taylor and I were, were really looking at, which is that the true work of the board this year is obviously goal one. However, what I don't want is for the board to drop the support that the superintendent and the administration need to continue the excellent work that they've been doing. And I think by having the goal, we acknowledge the work that is currently being done and we're saying that we're here for it. And, and I think that was kind of the goal of number two, not to set up more work for ourselves, not to tell anyone how to do their jobs, not to do our own culture and climate survey, but perhaps to encourage the administration to do one, to get information that they can work with. I think that, that was really the, the goal was for the superintendent and the administration to understand that we see the work that they've done, we acknowledge it, and that we believe in it. And that it's still very relevant and important to the Ontario community that this work continues to be done. It doesn't mean that, that there's stuff in here that we are going to specifically do, other than support superintendent McLaren and her team in continuing the work that they are doing. And so if there's another way for us to say it, I'm 100% open to that. But I would really hate to take it off the table because I think it's important for the community to see that that is our goal, to continue to support the superintendent and her team in doing the work that needs to be done. Yeah, the newsletter is ours.
So why don't we just have that as a goal? Instead of having all of this thing, just say, we continue to support the superintendent and her administration in, in the initiatives that we have worked and continue to work on. It's something short and sweet. And then, because again, I don't want to, number one goal is going to take a lot of time from our administrators too.
Right, but that doesn't, absolutely 100%, but, but the work that's happening in goal number two can't stop. No matter what we're doing, it can't stop. And I.
I agree with that. And I never said to it. So we just can turn around and say we can continue to support it.
My only hesitation is that there, there's language in here that is important to our community. And so that, I just want to be mindful of that, is that, you know, there are, there are people who want to make sure that we're providing the safest possible environment for our students. So I'm, I'm happy to do it either way, but I do want to be mindful of that. Trustee Wallace.
Maybe we could take another crack, another, you know, editorial crack at, you know, taking the concerns that we hear and bring another version. And I'm happy to help with that if that's something that you'd like. But just.
Baby? My daughter is having a baby this weekend. So if anybody else wants to jump in on, on two, I think it sounds like we're in agreement on one, if we change the, if I could read my own handwriting, accomplish exploration through input from superintendent recommendations, board ad hoc committee, shared decision-making committee and community outreach and input. I think if we change that, we're all in agreement on the first goal. No? Sarah?
I'm not, but that's okay.
Okay. And then David, if you and I could take a, a virtual crack at number two and bring it back. We got to get these passed, guys, at the next meeting. So, you know, we need to make an effort. We will share, trustee Taylor, trustee Wallace and I will work on two, share it with each of you, not for discussion, but for your own edification. And then when we come back in two weeks, we must vote on these goals and get this passed. It's very important. Superintendent McLaren cannot move on with what she needs to do if we don't get this done. Trustee Bishop.
Can we, can we vote on one goal? And can we add goals as we go? Or do we have to have everything solid for a vote? I'm curious if we could vote on one goal.
Do you know if there's any legalese there that we're not aware of?
I don't, but I don't see why there would be.
The board goals are our own. We don't even have to have board goals. So it's nothing legal that we have to worry about.
Okay. So before, let's go ahead and take a vote on board goal number one with the recognition, Amanda, that we are going to come back in two weeks and vote on the entirety of the goals. Support the development of a long-term district-wide plan that strategically addresses educational goals, declining enrollment, educator and staff shortages, facilities, community impact, budget and cost-saving measures, explore improving educational opportunities for our middle school students by moving to a sixth to eighth grade middle school. Accomplish exploration and accomplish this exploration through input from superintendent recommendations, board ad hoc committee, shared decision-making committee and community outreach and input, period. May I have first? Trustee Wallace, second, trustee Bishop. Amanda, that's six out of seven. So that passes. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Are we, we have three on here. I assume we're, are we going to move off three or?
Yeah, I think we'll probably just let three go. And, and we can take a look at that next year. You know, Kevin's going to kill me for that one. Mr. Salem, don't, don't burn down my house. Okay. We could include it in, in number two and then.
We'll throw it into two.
Former president Salem may not burn down my house.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it is also an ongoing initiative. Yeah. So I think we should include it. Absolutely. It's very important.
Trustee Taylor, trustee Wallace, let's take a look at civics in our second call. That way Kevin will not be angry at all of us. All right. Are we at nine point zero eight, Amanda? Six?
Nine point zero six.
Oh, it's on the bottom. Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, really? Okay. Let's talk about final details on the creation of our board newsletter. Noel, if you need to leave at any point, yeah, feel free to, to take off whenever you need to, okay? No judgment here. I would be right behind you. Who would like to talk about our board newsletter? Anybody have anything that they want to? So I think we left the conversation with trying to decide how often we want to inflict our newsletter upon the taxpayers. I think we were talking about, initially, we were talking about quarterly and then we were talking about doing it three times a year.
We were talking about the potential of a one-year, once-a-year, one-pager and then a column on occasional, or, you know, in the, in the existing newsletter. And so that was the thinking.
Superintendent McLaren or trustee Bishop?
I think after my discussion or our discussion with Holly Brooker, she had kind of let us better understand that you can't put a one-page just insert. It has to be part of the stapled newsletter, which means it's actually a four-page commitment. Unless you wanted to just take one page of the existing and bump other stories, which she, you know, as, as we were discussing it, they were saying, maybe they would write stories about the board work. If you wanted them to write about the board goals, that could be part of a page that is kind of dedicated to the board work.
I think once we have these hard, hard sort of crafted, difficult goals, the two that we, we finally decide upon, that's really important that we clearly and in really large type, just plaster it in that, you know, a page, take a page when we've done it and let people know what we're all about. So I would encourage us to, to bump at least once a year, a few stories. And then it could be a much shorter, you know, you know, just a column that she had, she had shown that there was a perfect place for it. Maybe if it's just, you know, contrasted with a different color, you know, or something like that, be fine.
Trustee Bishop.
I, I just want to go back to maybe late May, early June and just kind of remind everybody that when we first started talking about a board newsletter, a board newsletter, it was really to communicate to the community what happens in our board meetings, you know, what's happening. So initially, we talked about using the superintendent's, you know, update that she sends out to all contacts within the district, you know, and just maybe fine tuning it a little bit, but to really, I think, let the community know that the superintendent and the board of that are working together. And this is what we talked about and this is what we, you know, agreed or disagreed on or whatever. And I think that, you know, we've kind of gotten away from that idea and gotten into more of a, you know, like really publishing, you know, a, a publication. And I, I want to, I just want to make sure that we haven't lost track of that idea of just kind of sharing, sharing the information of the work of the school board and, and the district combined as a, you know, joint force for good.
I mean, in, in listening to everyone, it, it almost seems like there are a few distinct opportunities for us to communicate with the public. There's the, the beginning of the school year, the middle of the school year, and the end of the school year. So there's, you know, our goals, who we are, what we do, who your board members are, how you contact us, what our goals are for the year, kind of a check-in, you know, around the middle of the year. This is what we've accomplished thus far. This is what we hope to accomplish in the spring. This is what we're looking towards for the spring. Bye, Noel. Thank you. And then a wrap-up. And that middle one might actually fall within the budget, kind of the budget newsletter, which I, I think is. which I think is actually an important time for people to hear from the school board is around budget time. So if we looked at that budget newsletter as an opportunity to kind of say, you know, whatever piece we have to say about, you know, where things are at. And then the end of the year, how we've wrapped things up, who the new trustees are, what has changed for the board. And then the beginning of the year, where we say who the trustees, a little about each of us or however we want to do that, no pictures or you know, whatever that is, how you contact us and what the board goals are. That kind of seems like a natural progression to me with the two first and last being you know, one pagers and then an insert into the budget, BOSI's budget kind of breakdown that I'm pretty sure most people read. Everybody's looking at me like I have three heads, but I'm not sure why.
But wouldn't we, for the budget insert, wouldn't we have to do four pages?
No, Holly said that we could have a column, like there was an area for-
Like a head, like-
Yeah, instead of if we did a full like thing, that would be have to be four pages, but if we took and wrote an article or a column basically.
Yeah, so we what we ultimately talked about among the communication committee was was that it would be incorporated in our existing newsletter, just maybe borrowing some space here and there, with maybe a little more space during that first, you know, communication where we say, you know, here are our goals. And then we would also put that on the web and and I think we would do some social media too, but all within the existing, you know, outreach that we we have, just you know.
Can it all, like I agree with all that, but can we also have like a little blurb in the superintendent's emails that go out? If there's any highlights or whatever?
The ones that the superintendent sends to all staff after our meetings because she, Superintendent McLaren sends kind of a wrap-up to all contacts that discusses what we do at our board meetings and what we've decided, if anything has changed or what we've approved, et cetera. Are you talking about that or do you see another opportunity?
As a parent, I thought I've gotten superintendent emails, haven't we?
Superintendent updates?
Yeah.
So are you thinking that maybe three times a year, we push into something like that?
Any of the major points that were discussed at the board meetings. Nothing long, just like little-
So maybe a couple of your updates, we could have a board kind of thing? Would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, if we wanted to to do a board update and send it out to parents, that that's fine if we, you know, if the whoever's gonna be kind of crafting it on behalf of the board wants to take.
It doesn't even have to be like our own, like even if it's like a little thing at the end of yours, like a little add-on so that we don't inundate the families with all these emails.
Right, so what I hear trustee Taylor saying is that when Superintendent McLaren sends out, I think they're quarterly superintendent updates or maybe as needed.
Yeah, more as needed, but we could do it.
We could insert some board information to ensure that we're not doing our own shout points so that we're not inundating parents, but that we're attaching to something that parents probably actually read, which is Superintendent McLaren's updates. So maybe we would identify when you're thinking about doing one, I know you usually do one around the holidays, usually one in the beginning of the year, one at the end of the year. So maybe around those times, we could push in. Trusty Story?
Or the one that we receive more updates from are the principals, not the superintendent. The superintendent only sends out-
A couple a year.
Yeah, it's very rare. We get more emails and updates from the principals.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the point though, is that we're if we're if we only want to do it a couple times a year.
But also, we also have to not only send them out to our parents, we need to send them out to our taxpayers. So again, we have to figure out how we're doing that because that was another discussion that we didn't, I brought up last time because if we're gonna email, it's only gonna go to parents, it's not gonna go to our taxpayers and we're responsible to taxpayers.
So we talked about, just to recap, we talked about having having information distributed to the public libraries and to the town offices as a way to address that concern, that the very valid concern that you had shared, using the town offices and the town libraries as a way to disseminate a one pager a couple times a year. So I feel like everyone agreed that that was an acceptable solution at our last meeting.
I know that's not going to go to a lot of people. I know a lot of seniors that don't go to the libraries or their town halls, so that's if we're giving updates, we just we need to give them to everybody. That's why when I had suggested when we sent the stuff out, we could do it during the you know, our mailer. But if we're planning on doing a more updated newsletter, this is something we have to figure out how we're gonna get-
I don't, I think we're talking about two different things. Yeah, go ahead.
It's not, so we would use the existing newsletter that goes out to every taxpayer four times a year and we'd at least have a column in in that as well as maybe a little more than a column in the first communication that we do. So the next newsletter, assuming we get our our goals done next week, we would then have a fair, like a little bit of a larger one, but it would go to every taxpayer.
Yeah, but then we're also discussing about sending out emails and updates that way. We have to decide how to get that out to the public too, by not just putting it at the post offices and or at the at the libraries and at town halls.
Okay, so trustee Taylor and then I just want to recap.
Again, I'm seeing this in a different way. If it's not necessarily new information that goes into each of these things, it could be reiterating old information to make sure it gets to all points of the community. But if we do a column in the newspaper, we do a little blurb that gets you know, copied on to the superintendent's or another blur, you know, the same blurb that gets copied on to the principal one and then the same information that goes on to our website or the you know, Facebook or whatever, it's you're still having the same information but going different ways to reach everybody. And then you can put some in the you know, in the libraries or whatever, but it doesn't necessarily have to be different information and we're now not being you know, clear or dishonest, it's just different ways to reach all parts of the community because there's no way we're gonna reach everybody all the same way.
So I know trustee Bishop wants to speak. I just I just want to reiterate because I actually think that you guys are saying very similar things. So what I hear trustee Story saying is very important, any information that we disseminate has to go to everyone in the community. And what I hear trustee Taylor saying is that it's excellent if we put it into the newsletter that goes to every taxpayer, but we should also take advantage of the other things that we have available to us like social media, the website and superintendent updates to share the same information, but in another way. So I think you guys are on the same page. It's the same information, it's just being disseminated in multiple ways. The primary way would be the mailer that goes to every taxpayer, so we don't have to worry about leaving anyone out. Then we would put it on social media because there's a segment of the population that only uses social media. And then we would put it in the libraries and the town offices for the people who prefer to get their information that way. And we would look to hit as many possible sources and outlets as we can to make sure that three or four times a year, we are getting this information out. Is that correct?
So we're just putting out the information, we're only putting out a newsletter, sending out information that three times a year or four times when the district sends it. We are not sending any other different information.
Correct.
We're not doing a newsletter, you know, that is only getting emailed or anything like that.
No, correct. It would only be-
Because this is very confusing because there has been multiple discussions of-
That's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull it in here, guys.
We're just using it, we're just using the the mailer that is getting sent home to every taxpayer. That is the only newsletter and then it could, it will be shared through various sources.
Exactly.
But we are not doing any more newsletters than the four a year.
That is correct. I think that is the only thing that we've agreed on so far, is that we are going to use the newsletter, it goes to every taxpayer and then we will use multiple media outlets to also disseminate the same information so that nobody's getting different information. And we will use the space that's allotted to us in that newsletter as well as taking the same information, putting it on social media, putting it into the superintendent's update, giving it to the libraries and whoever else might want it, which is probably nobody, but we will try.
But that means our superintendent is doing a update at the same time as our-
She is, yeah, we're not, we're not looking to inundate people with emails, we would just maybe put a link to the website that has the information on it in the superintendent's update so that we're not-
Because she has her own column in the newspaper or the newsletter, so that's-
Can I just suggest that we also allow ourselves a touch of flexibility? So if we determine as a board that we might need even a little more additional information going just on the web or or you know, let's say it's breaking news, that has to be something that's that's more timely, that we just allow ourselves a touch of flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's an emergency or there's a you know, a pandemic or you know, something in which the board has to respond in a timely way, then we will discuss as a group at that time whether we use a mailer that goes through the post office because they actually do these things where you can give them something and they send it to everyone in your community. If we have an emergency, God forbid, or it's something that we have an opinion on that's very strong that we need to get out to everyone, I agree with you that we should be flexible in it and that there are ways to reach the entire community that are hopefully cost-effective. Trusty Story?
Breaking news, there should never, it will never come from the board. All news and anything like that will come from the superintendent, not us ourselves.
Okay, before we get too ahead of ourselves, let's just agree that if there is something that we need to disseminate to the entire community, that we agree to be flexible. It is unlikely that that would ever happen, but I have certainly seen in communities where boards of education need to respond to the community in an immediate fashion. If that happens, God forbid, please don't let it happen, if that happens, we will be flexible enough to allow that to happen. And I'm sure we can come to a consensus if God forbid that ever happens, right? Yep, okay. And in the meantime, we're agreeing that we're going to use the newsletter, we're going to take a column, someone's going to write that column, we're all going to read it and we're going to be comfortable and agree, we'll probably go with the same format of as long as four people respond to it within a timely way, that's going out. And then it will be disseminated in multiple other ways across the community. Trusty Lynch?
Thank you, yeah, that's my question, is who's gonna write it? Is it BOSI's or is it the communications committee?
So I think it depends, BOSI's is certainly willing to you know, when, once the board adopts their final version of however many goals are in the final version, I think they are happy to write an article on that. But if there is a particular topic that the board wants to author, then-
Right, yeah, and thank you, I want to just acknowledge where I think there was confusion, your updates monthly are very helpful and I do see them being also you know, part of the content, right? So as we can be reflecting on a quarterly basis about the the things that we've accomplished as a board and help the community understand our role. But I I would think that it would be helpful if the BOSI's team could take the first draft and that the communications committee could review it. Does that feel right?
Maybe the communications committee would provide them with the information that they used to take the first crack because they wouldn't know, you know, I don't want to ask them to go through hours of this.
No, but they'll have Superintendent McLaren's monthly update to all contacts as content.
But I think they're gonna want to know what they're writing on, what the articles should be.
Okay, so would it be helpful then if we gave an outline of like here's-
Bullet points.
Bullet points of here, these are the things that-
That you would like the public to know.
Because, okay.
Great. Because I think otherwise it will get overwhelming, you don't want the whole newsletter to be my update.
Okay, right, so we'll do some, a bullet point and we just need to know deadlines as well when you get it back from from Holly, but once we get that information, we can do that easily for this next one because you've already provided all the content. Thank you.
Okay.
And then we can ask them to write it and then we'll make sure we have time to review it as a committee so that we all feel good about it and it reflects our work. Do we then need to bring it back to the board table? Just again, I'm thinking about timing.
I don't think we need to vote on it. I think that it's very similar to our responses to the public if whoever, when that article is crafted by BOSI's with our initial input, it goes out to the board as a whole, the first four people to respond, that's a majority, if everyone agrees in that way, everybody has the same amount of time to respond, then it goes live. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Because I think if we wait to bring it to a vote, and I don't think it's something that we need to actually vote on, it's it's information sharing with the public. Do you, yeah. And trustee Bishop, I cut you off before, did you have something that you wanted to add? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. Are we all in agreement to the best of our ability?
Yes.
Okay.
But no TikTok videos.
No TikTok videos.
Okay.
Unless Victoria wants to do.
Yeah.
I bet Mr. Bono would. Okay, I'm gonna ask that we take our break now. NISBA resolutions. Okay, John, we're gonna take a five-minute break. John, we're going to take a five-minute break. Item 9.07, NISBA resolutions. I know that we have all read these resolutions already and we have engaged individually in some conversation about where we would like to be. My suggestion, and I'm open to whatever you guys want to do, is just that we will read the resolution number, take a vote. We can also read it with the very brief resolved line, if that's easier for everyone. But I would not suggest that we read the entirety of each resolution. And we've done a lot of work already to, to not do this.
I think we have to read the little brief resolve.
The resolved.
Um, portion of it because these I don't see, never mind, looking at something else. I think just the little, the resolve and then vote from there and discussion.
All right, perfect. Why don't we go around the room and if everybody takes, yeah, if everybody takes the first, you know, takes five, then nobody has to listen to me lisp through all of it. Yeah, I bet. So do my children. You want to take the first five, Val?
Sure.
So we're going to vote on all of them because we do not have consensus on any of them. We only have six votes, we need to have seven, so we're just going to do a quick yes or no, unless there's a D next to it, in which warrants discussion. Everybody clear? That was the advice from our attorney. Because we did not all vote, if we had all seven of us on this sheet, we could just take a majority. Because we don't have all seven of us, we're just going to have to do a yes or a no. It gives you the opportunity to change your mind if you'd like. We're going to go quick. Okay.
Number one, resolve that the New York State School Board Association supports meaningful reforms to the tax cap levy formula. Yes? Noes? One no. Oh, two noes. Sunsetting, or, yep. Proposed resolution number two, resolve that the New York State School Board Association supports reforming the system of educator discipline to the cap, to cap the length of time educators awaiting 3020A proceedings are paid. Yeses? Noes? Number three, resolve the New York State School Board Association supporting raising the allowable undesi, the undesigned fund balance, fund balance for school districts. Yes? Number four, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would provide finalizing the ballot for positions on small school, small city school districts, board on the day after 10-day period for filling and reviewing any objections to nomination positions, petitions. Number five, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would amend Article 18A of the general municipal law to permit school districts at their option to be necessary parties to payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements. Yeses?
I was just curious on how this could or could not affect our district, you know, potentially. I was just hoping for someone who had more knowledge than me to give me a little brief.
Sure thing. So really quickly, the way it works now is the Ulster County IDA will go into agreements with certain organizations for a pilot, meaning that instead of paying the, the taxes that they would have paid based on their assessed value, they will give them a percentage of that over a certain amount of time. The problem is, is that in situations like that, the school district, while we don't lose money, what happens is it then pushes the taxes on everybody else. So if we don't know what's happening, and if you can imagine in the case of Dean Gitter's resort that we're going to put in, it was going to be a huge pilot, would have had a huge impact on the other taxpayers. But in most instances, schools are not involved and we have no seat at the table and no voice as to what pilots go through and what pilots do not go through.
Can I just add to that also that pilot payments are included in the tax cap calculation? And so if the school district is not aware that the pilot, the terms of a pilot that are being proposed, our tax cap, tax levy limit calculation may not be as accurate as you would have hoped.
Sure. Thank you.
Resolution six, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislative, legislation that would align legal requirements imposed upon small city school districts with the, those of central, union-free, and common school districts. Resolution seven, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports funding to expand New York State and industry-approved and certified career and technical education programs. Resolution eight, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports testing accommodations for students with disabilities.
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious, given the number of students in our district, how, what the current accommodations are for students with disabilities, if there are any.
Happy to answer that. So they all vary based on the individual need of a student. And that is taken into account in terms of specific data evaluation, input from teachers, parents, and the students themselves. We closely monitor those testing accommodations. Every time that a student refuses them, we track that. We have specific forms to use that so that we can make valuable decisions. But we can also only use testing accommodations that are approved by the state in terms of what we use for state tests. So we have some very specific requirements and I'm happy to share that with you. It's on the NICID webpage, but I'd be happy to share it with the board so that they can see that.
Resolution nine, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association opposes legislation expanding New York State's charter school laws. Resolution 10, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports adding fully state-funded arts and music education as a common school branch that should be incorporated into the public school curriculum to provide a well-rounded education for children. Resolution 11, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports the state enhancing support for school districts in response to cybersecurity threats that endanger staff, endanger student and staff personal data and school safety. Proposed resolution 12, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support a requirement that districts be fully funded to employ a sufficient number of mental health professionals, examples, social workers and school psychologists, to properly serve the needs of the students of the districts of New York State. Resolution 13, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports a revision to transportation statutes to permit a school district to provide aidable transportation outside voter-approved limits, so long as doing so would not result in an additional cost to the school district and would not displace any students otherwise entitled to transportation. This has a question. This bothers me, I have to say, because it says, you know, if it, if it doesn't turn around and say that no additional cost to transportation, but as you add more students to a bus run, even if it's driving past it, you're still adding costs by, you know, you're idling and stuff like that. Am I looking at the right, the right one? Says, you know, a school district could do this with no additional costs. But if you're adding, say, five students to a bus run, five bus stops, you're adding costs. So this is not clearly written, it's.
I only had a little confusion because in the middle, it talks about children who live within the distance where it is unsafe or impractical. And I know that we had some of the area right around our Boyceville campus designated as a safe school zone so that we could provide transportation and have it be aided. And I believe it went to the voters to be approved. So I, I feel like there is a method for that unless this is more broad.
Outside, it says transport outside voter-approved.
It says pursuant to the current statute, it is imper, it is impermissible for districts to provide busing for such students even if at no cost to the district. The resolution would potentially allow for programs which could provide students who live within the adopted distance to ride the bus if there is space available and would not increase cost. So basically, if you're driving by my house anyway, pick up my kid. Which, you know, as somebody who lives outside, within that mile that I have to drive my child to school every day, I would love this. And I think it's beneficial in a rural district, really, is my overarching point. But I, I understand your point, trustee Story. Do we want to take a vote? Yeses? Okay, no? Trustee Story? That's a yes, Amanda?
Proposed resolution 14, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports a comprehensive reform of the foundation aid formula.
There was a discussion point on this because I remembered that this came up last year and that trustee Story made an excellent point about foundation aid formula. So I wondered if Assistant Superintendent Leclerc could speak to it.
Yes, so currently we're in what they call a hold harmless situation. If the foundation formula was to run the way it's supposed to, we would actually get less state aid. We are actually overfunded in foundation aid. So while, yes, we would like to see our fellow school districts get the money they deserve, we kind of hope they don't take ours away.
Like a very unusual catch-22 for Antioch that if we vote yes for this, we're actually voting against ourselves. So I just wanted to, to make that really clear to the board before we gave a yes. So I just wanted to make that really clear to the board before we gave a yes vote on this. Because while superficially, it sounds terrific, and it would be terrific for other schools, it is not actually terrific for Antioa.
Can I, because I don't know, how are we, how is it working for us, but it's not the right way?
So when they froze foundation aid, they froze it based on the two thousand and eight enrollment data. So because our enrollment has been decreasing substantially more than a lot of other schools in New York State, we've been getting more money even though, if you look at the numbers that, you know, Superintendent McLaren gave you, we were about half the number of students as we were back then.
Can I add one other thing? The other thing to keep in mind is that since the tax levy limit has been implemented, if we have a drastic reduction in state aid before the tax levy limit, we could then just raise our taxes and only have it be a majority vote. But now, if we lose a significant amount of aid and have to raise our taxes beyond the tax levy limit to make up for it, then we would need to have a supermajority, which is much harder to get, to, to have the taxpayers agree to pay more taxes.
I just have one question. The freeze, is it a permanent freeze? Or is it something that could happen like next week that they decide to actually do with the math again around this?
So they actually started running the foundation aid formula, and all schools are supposed to be a hundred percent funded by next year, I believe. But what they did is when they started rerunning the foundation aid formula, because there were quite a few schools, I think about a hundred in the district that were overfunded, that's why they put us what they called a hold harmless, meaning they will, they won't decrease it, but they are also not giving us huge increases every year.
So I don't know if we want to take a vote, but with the understanding that, again, this is great for other people, not that great for us. So yes votes? Okay, Amanda, that's a no.
Resolution fifteen, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports universal pre-K for third and four, three and four-year-olds statewide.
That was, that proposal was submitted by Antioa. Thank you, trustee Lynch. Proposed resolution sixteen, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association shall petition the New York State Education Department and the commissioner thereof to include as a mandatory prerequisite to being employed by a school district in the state of New York as a licensed security guard, that said individual receives as part of their training and licensure, a separate and specific credential signifying training and knowledge of the laws, rules, and regulations applicable to schools.
I guess I thought about, like, do we know if Officer Tom is, you know, has this training? I mean, is it something that, that we, we should have as an absolute?
I think that was my concern with this particular resolution and the rationale. The rationale, and somewhere in here, they talk about school resource officers, I think, but security guards don't carry a gun. So I, I don't feel like they're, I don't feel like this is a well-crafted, I think it's a well-intentioned resolution, but a...
Got me a little, yeah, it got me a little nervous just because we don't know, again, it sort of ties our hands in future if we were, God forbid, didn't need security guards.
Right. Deputy, Deputy Sharon is not a security guard. He's, he's a sheriff's deputy, so he absolutely has lots of training, but he has a different, it's a different class of employee.
I'm going to vote no for this because I believe this should be a local decision, what the school board decides what these people should have, what kind of training. My concern with sending this up to SED is, and having to, them to get certifications and people get this. I know somebody that is a brand-new teacher that just graduated and's been waiting sixteen weeks to get their certification from New York State, and she cannot turn around and start interviewing anywhere until she has the certifications. Add one more certification to the school districts having to be required to get, and it's going to take even longer to get staff members.
Proposed resolution seventeen, resolve that NISBA shall seek legislative changes to allow component school districts to hold the BOSI's administrative budget vote and BOSI's Board of Education election on a date of their own choosing between April sixteenth and April thirtieth, rather than a single uniform date selected by the BOSI's Board of, Board of Education President. Proposed resolution eighteen, resolve that NISBA work with other associations and Office of School Personnel Review and Accountability to develop better systems that allow districts and BOSI's to query to, or to be notified when a Part eighty-three report or an investigation is pending.
I forgot what in Part eighty-three hearing was again. Can remind me what this regards to?
I actually just Googled it. It has to do with moral character actions. So thirty twenty-eight teacher tenure hearings, Part eighty-three more, moral character actions. I'm assuming it doesn't get used very often.
It's a reporting system. It would allow for a reporting system so that if someone left Antioa and applied in Highland, they would be entitled to the information that that particularly employee, particular employee was under an Article eighty-three investigation, which, you know, is something that I would want for our district.
Can we ask those questions legally?
Well, this is suggesting that a database be developed, so that would, you know, that would be the next thing, you know? It's a reporting system, so I don't think we have to determine the legal, the legal ramifications of this. I think this is just saying that we would agree that a reporting system would be beneficial to our district. Good? Yeah? No? Yes? Okay, yes votes? Okay, that's a yes, Amanda?
Proposed resolution nineteen, resolve that NISBA work to make or add to existing law to make it a felony for a district employee to have lewd or sexual relations with a current student in the district regardless of age or consent.
There was a discussion point on this? Did somebody have a question?
Yeah. It, someone who, who cares a lot about language, as, as someone who cares about language, I got concerned about this because theoretically, if, let's say, there was an instance of inappropriate behavior by a, a district employee, but it was not necessarily criminal, and it was a fireable offense, it would make it a felony. Let's say, for argument's sake, if, if someone, you know, made a comment that was untoward and it was fireable, I still don't know if I want to make that a felony. Lewd, you know, lewd's a, it's a, I don't know, lewd is sort of a tricky word.
Yeah, I mean, I have to assume that, because it says that healthcare workers and prison guards who work in similar relationship with their clients are covered under this penal code. So this is not, it's an actual penal code, and they're, they're asking to add school employees to the penal code that already exists.
I'm curious about super, the superintendent's thinking on this, just for interest.
I don't know what the process is for determining that someone has done that, but I certainly, I don't, I don't know how I feel about it being a felony, but I don't want any of our employees having any inappropriate relations with current students regardless of age or consent, because I don't believe that that's an appropriate relationship dynamic. There is no consent that's actually valid.
Yes? One, two, three, four, five, that's a yes, Amanda?
Proposed resolution twenty, resolution twenty, resolve that New York State School Boards Association supports amendments to the New York State General Municipal Law governing reserve funds to authorize school districts to be able to borrow from one or more of their existing reserve funds in order to cover temporary cash flow shortfalls attendant to the annual delay between the levy and the collection of taxes.
Although I know our district is not in this situation to have to do this, which is so wonderful and a gift, I would like to ask Assistant Superintendent Leclerc's thoughts on this resolution. Would there be drawbacks to allowing districts to utilize funds in their possession rather than using tax anticipation notes?
I cannot see any drawbacks. If anything, it would, would not, it's definitely getting late. Schools would not have to pay interest where they normally would have had to borrow the money.
Okay, great.
Proposed resolution twenty-one, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports the adoption of legislation which will, which would require the New York State Education Department to develop regulations providing oversight over special education parent advocates and rules of conduct and enforcement procedures for the same.
Okay, there were a lot of discussion points on this. I'll just lead off by saying I'm a hard no. I, I've, I've been a parent advocate before, and, you know, my, I don't know that my social work degree qualified me to do that, and I don't want anyone to tell me that it doesn't. Because parents who are in this roles, who don't feel like they can be their own advocates, should be allowed to bring whomever they think is appropriate to advocate for their child. That's my position. Anybody else?
I agree with trustee Sherry, and I also say that as, I've been other parent, I've been a parent advocate for other people because of you doing, dealing with the system of my son, and there's not, there is not enough advocates out there for our students, so...
I have also been an advocate for parents and students. My caution with my consideration to vote yes on this resolution is because not all parent advocates are well-informed. Not all parent advocates are working out of the goodness of their heart or their concern for the parent or the child. You know, sometimes parent advocates can run, can, can make a CSE meeting run very, very badly, and misinform parents who are misinformed on topics for potentially a very long time, creating a hostile environment.
I struggle with this as well, having come from a background of special ed administration and having a child with special needs. So I sit on both sides of this, and it's a struggle because we want support, but it needs to be support that's educated, whether that's life, life support, like from living it, or actually having a degree or something else to support it. So I struggle with this.
Yeah, I think it's a tough one. I also, I think I, I have a concern about whether or not there are, that there would be enough appropriately trained advocates to go around for all of the families. Like in Antioa, we have a significant number of children with IEPs. If we don't allow parents to choose their own advocates, would the district need to provide those advocates, and would we be able to? You know, would be a question that I would have. And then what would happen to the families that could not find an advocate? Would they not be able to have one because the person that they had available to them was not appropriately trained according to NICE Ed? That would be a concern that I would have.
You know, just going back, way back to when we used to, as, as a special ed director or PPS director, used to try to get parent, not parent advocates, but parent members. So a parent member of the CSE would be another parent of a child with an IEP who's just, has experience with the process, especially for new parents, parents that are new to the, to the process. And it was so hard to, to get more parents to, you know, to volunteer for that position. But state ed did provide a training, you know? Basically, it was a, you know, a PowerPoint presentation. You would get together with a group of parents, and there was, there was a training that they would go through, you know, two or three hours at night, and they would be considered trained. And I think it's just, what I was thinking when I read this resolution was that something like that would be provided, not necessarily a certification program or, you know, like a, you know, some college credentials that would be required, but perhaps some kind of training that's developed through state ed and presented, I don't know, maybe through BOSI's, things like that, where parents or advocates understand what their role is. But that might be wishful thinking.
Do you guys feel like you have enough information to vote? Okay, yes votes? No? Okay, so that's a no. What are we on, twenty-two? All right. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association supports legislation at the state level that would allow for school board members to receive a stipend for their work as a trustee. I think we had one discussion point on this, I assume it's Valerie?
No, it wasn't me, but I, I will, I do have a discussion thing, but we turn, saying yes, but in order for this to happen, it has to either change in state law or the state constitution, there's something that has to happen because the school board is one, one thing that we can't get any kind of stipend or any paid, any paid money for.
I think it's a good opportunity to, to let everyone know that just because we vote yes on this, it then goes to, to all of the schools, all of the schools are doing similar votes. If it passes with a majority yes, then it is an action item for NISBA. It does not mean that anything changes. It just means that this is something that we are, as school boards, asking NISBA to take action on. So Valerie's point is very true, but it also doesn't change whether or not we would like NISBA to pursue stipends for school board members. Somebody had a discussion point that was not Valerie? No?
I don't, it wasn't me who said it, but I think the rationale in this, I've thought about it the whole ride over here, because I struggle with a payment situation, but I think the rationale that this district, Beacon School District Board, their school board came up with, is really well-written. I think to have diversity on the board and have opportunity for parents who, you know, particularly in my family, I have a husband who works shift work, so every other meeting, I do have to find childcare for my special needs child. So I can get behind this for that reason, not, it's not about the money, it's about opening the door for more opportunity to have diverse opinions and thoughts for our board.
Actually, I think the discussion point was me, as I'm looking at my sheet. I can get on board with that and I agree with that. My concern was kind of bringing in people that are only looking for a stipend, I guess, looking on the pessimistic side of it. Like, you know, they're not in it for the actual good of the children, but they're thinking, oh, I can, you know, actually earn something for this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really valid point. But I would also assume that, given that it's New York State, and given that we, some of us have an idea of what town board members earn, for... for their work, I don't think it would be life-changing. Dr. Bill had said that in Texas when we discussed this kind of as a group. Dr. Bill had said that in Texas it's a salary, and that people do this as a job, and they get paid tens of thousands of dollars a year to do this work. I don't think that New York State, the six or seven thousand dollars that would be a stipend for a board member would make a difference, but it would make a difference for a parent who needs to provide childcare. It would make a difference for a parent who can't afford gas, because if you live in Woodstock and you have to come to Phoenisha and then drive home, it's significant, or a parent who needs to buy pizza for their kids because they're not home to provide dinner, or a parent who needs to take time off from work because they do shift work and maybe they work in the evenings. I think that by providing what would probably be a minimal stipend, it would open the door to a lot of families in this district that may not look at the possibility of doing board work because it's a lot of work and time that you don't get paid for.
And you don't necessarily have to accept the stipend. You could turn it down, but it would at least be an option and open the door to a lot of people who are probably not able to take this work.
Where would the money come from?
This is on every year. Every year, this gets, makes it to NISBA and gets shot down.
I just wouldn't want to see it taken from
The district.
Children of the district.
Yeah, I mean, I think it probably wouldn't if New York State, you know, allowed for it. But it might, you know, towns, town stipends for town board members come from taxpayers. So, you know, I don't think it's, but I also know that every year this is on there and every year it gets voted down. And I think some of that, just a guess, has to do with that equity factor. I think that there are people who serve on school boards who think that, you know, their voices has more weight than those of other people in their communities, and that that might be part of the reason that this gets voted down. And I would like to see that change, because I think that they did a really good job of justifying why there should be a stipend, and how we could attract more potential members of the community to sit on a school board. Trustee Lynch, did you have a point of order?
I was just gonna say, and the rationale does say it's from the district's overall budget.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote? Yes? Okay, Amanda, that's a yes. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association join statewide advocacy efforts to support healthy, high-quality school meals through child nutrition reauthorization, CNR. This is item 23, and there are no discussion points. Yes votes? Okay, Amanda, that's a yes. Oh wait, I'm sorry Valerie, did you have a discussion point? No, okay, okay. Item 24. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association support legislation to fully fund or reimburse school districts for tax exemptions for veterans. Did anyone have a discussion point? Yes votes? Okay, Amanda, that's a yes. Item 25. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association support legislation to fully reimburse districts for all investments in electric buses, including all infrastructure. Did anybody have a discussion point? Okay, yes votes? Amanda, that's a yes. Item 26. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association support legislation at the state and/or federal level that would reform the current gun laws to strengthen background checks implementing red flag laws, as well as laws that will restrict guns from those under the age of 21. We did have a discussion point on this?
That was me, but only because, not that I don't want gun safety, but just the red flag laws sometimes bother me with the far-reaching implications of them.
Valerie?
I know I'm voting no for this because I don't think a school board should have anything to do with gun control. That's the, we need to worry about our schools and our students. We need to stay far away. We have no control over guns. We don't give out pistol permits. The school boards don't have that ability. This needs to stay with the elected officials and not with. If we want to advocate for that as a school board, then we do that with our local politicians, but they're the ones that have to make the change, not school boards.
So their rationale is that it is of vital importance to the students and school personnel of New York that these laws be implemented nationwide. As strong as the laws in New York State are, red flag laws must be implemented nationally to prevent someone from simply crossing state lines to obtain a gun. I think the second sentence is not as relevant as the first that I read, which was their rationale as to why this is a school board issue. So are we ready to take a vote? Yes? It's a yes, Amanda? David, do you want to go on with 27?
Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation to amend the education law to standardize the deadlines for filing of candidate petitions for the various categories of school districts. I was just hoping, again, that someone who is, you know, well-versed in this might have some thoughts about how it works here in the district, if it.
It seems that they're just trying to get some consistency, because if you, if you, for instance, look through the education law book that we have, you will see that in many cases, when you read education law, there are sections that pertain to central school districts. There are sections that pertain to city school districts and union free school districts, and this is just trying to get some consistency, I think, because, you know, for just even our neighboring district, Kingston, they have a totally different schedule on very, a large number of items. So I think they're just trying to gain some consistency. So that people don't get confused.
Resolution 28. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association will support legislation to establish the last date for candidates to file a petition after withdrawal of a candidate, so that such date is sufficiently in advance of the date of an annual meeting to provide school district clerks with enough time to prepare for the election, including printing of machine-readable ballots and absentee ballots. 29. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association seek to initiate legislation at the state or federal level that would provide dedicated funding to be allocated for school safety measures, including staffing. 30. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation that would require local school district consent for new charter school applications in districts with a large percentage of charter students.
I was actually the discussion point for all the ones pertaining to charter schools, just to get that out of the way. Only because my lack of understanding, I guess, for charter schools and how they impact us, because I'm kind of on the fence with, I believe in school choice, but I don't want to negatively impact a district that I think is functioning well and I like, if that makes sense.
That's okay. Not having had a charter school in our district, I'm glad that I'm not as intimately aware, but my understanding is that students who enroll in the charter school from the district of residence, that district then takes the money and supports the charter school. So for every student that leaves, tax dollars go to that charter school to support that student in that other school.
And there's been a lot of research that shows that that the case that had been made for charter schools has not been supported evidentiary. So there is not a lot of evidence that supports charter schools, but it does take a lot of money from public school districts. Ready to, do you have any more questions, Chris? No? Ready to vote? Yes? Okay, that's a yes, Amanda.
31. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would assure equitable full-day pre-kindergarten funding for all New York school districts. 32. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislative changes that reduce the impact of New York State's charter schools on traditional districts.
I just want to make sure trustee Taylor that you feel like you, I don't want you to vote on something that you don't feel comfortable, like you have enough knowledge about. So I just want to make sure that you.
I understand the rationale, but I think I'm like conflicted. You know what I mean? Like I want, and like I don't want to lose the money for our district because we are functioning well. But in districts that maybe are not holding up their end of the bargain for some areas, I would like them to be like, I want to go somewhere where I will get what I need. You know what I mean? So I'm a little... I wish there was better ways to hold accountable the school districts that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
I mean, I'm hopeful. It sounds like New York State is moving in that direction. It seems as if, over the next couple of years, that we will have actual accountability for charter and private schools, which would be excellent for New York State.
Right, because I would want the charter schools to also have a playbook that they're supposed to follow, and, you know, have the same testings and, you know, stuff like that.
I think that, I think that New York State is moving in a good direction on that, and it makes me feel good. Do we want to take a vote on this? Yes? Okay, we've got a yes, Amanda?
Resolution 33. Resolve that the New York State Boards Association support the proposed New York Health Act and any legislation at the state or federal level that provides single-payer healthcare for all New Yorkers.
Thank you, Kevin Salem. We have a discussion point on this?
Not so much discussion, but these are now the proposals that are not being recommended by NISBA. So this is different. If I remember correctly, they have to get two-thirds. Or there has to be some, for these to be voted on in the in the thing, there has to be enough people still, first of all, there and supporting this, because NISBA is no longer, is not supporting this. So just because we're voting on this, they may not be discussing this at NISBA at all.
Yeah, I mean, they say pretty clearly that they would like us to stop submitting this, and that they believe it's a national issue. I wholly disagree. I mean, while I would love there to be a national healthcare system, it's just not going to happen. So the financial impact on our school district would be so incredible that it's really hard not to acknowledge, just at a district level, what a difference that this would make for our district and for our taxpayers. And I think that's why Ontario keeps putting it forward. Even if you just look at it at a district level, the amount of money that our district would save would be consequential. Yes votes? One, two, three, four. I say yes, Amanda.
Number 34. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation that requires every child in New York State age zero to 21 be covered for free under the Child Health Plus program.
No, I think that was me again. Only because I guess as a nurse, I know how screwed up the healthcare system is. And just throwing money at it is a carpe diem for the government to kind of pay millions of dollars for something that doesn't quite work, and it's not actually fixing the problem. So seeing as a day-to-day working, just making it where we fund it isn't actually fixing it. I would like to tear down the whole thing and rebuild it, but that's never going to happen. And also giving free, nothing's free. It comes from the taxpayer, so it's another burden for people that might already be struggling, and then we have a huge problem with, I don't want to make it bigger than it is, but I think it's, there's too many things going on in it that, you know, to just give free rein to free healthcare. Is the simplest explanation.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point, and the, NISBA would like us to not put this forward again, so if we want to give it one last hurrah, I think this will probably be the last year that we suggest it because they are not interested in supporting it at the state level. So, yes votes? So that's a yes, Amanda.
Sorry. 35. Resolve that NISBA support proposals, guidelines, and/or legislation in favor of local school district control and/or regional by-county control over matters pertaining to safety protocols and operations regarding the prevention of spread of communicable diseases, illnesses, excuse me.
It was me again, only far-reaching, like, reaching too far, I guess. It's not really, that's not your place, like, know your role kind of thing. Like, I think it's too much, honestly, but that's just me.
So I think that, I think there was an interesting, you know, there's an interesting kind of dichotomy here, which is that the resolution is saying that local control is better, that districts, there were districts I know that were impacted by COVID-19 protocols that New York State set that didn't really pertain to them, because they were, you know, in far-flung districts of New York and did not have maybe COVID, you know, high COVID numbers, but were, you know, shut down and fully remote. So, you know, this is kind of saying that local districts should make their own decisions. And then the Resolutions Committee is saying public health officials are the most qualified to make those decisions. So it's an interesting dichotomy. You know, it's where do you want to put the decision-making ability? I'm not a CDC-qualified epidemiologist. I don't really personally want to make those decisions. But I do understand, you know, that there were a lot of districts that felt as if they should not have to follow guidelines by someone in Albany.
And God, like, again, because I'm in healthcare, it, yes, there were times where I'm like, I don't want to wear a mask anymore, and I think that the government was overreaching. But I don't want to have the responsibility of saying that it's okay and not having all the information, you know, that's going on in the upper levels, and then making a decision that is not right either.
I think it's also interesting to look at, see who submitted these resolutions and what goes on, and down, these are Long Island schools, and they all were a hot-budded area of no mask. There's, so, it's, I think it's interesting to see what, why some of these resolutions come, and look at the schools that are actually submitting them, and knowing the background of it.
That's a no, Amanda?
Number 36. Resolve that NISBA oppose mandates from the state education department that require school districts to implement curriculum regarding matters not pertaining to standard academic subjects.
There are discussion points on this, and I had asked Assistant Superintendent Laffin to weigh in on some of these, because I think they're that important. She's the expert. So I was hoping that Assistant Superintendent Laffin would have. So I was hoping that Assistant Superintendent Laffin would have an opinion about this.
I would say that the resolution does not correctly use the word curriculum. I think that it's a lean-in here. If you look at, require school districts to implement curriculum regarding matters, really, it's, it's an attempt to choose topics here, to kind of cherry-pick. And my concern around this is common expectations of learning and curricular support regardless of zip code. That's why we have common state expectations. And I think that sometimes if you were to let all of these things be determined at a local level, there are certain groups and voices that are not within a majority or necessarily represented by a school board, and, and those individuals, persons, or groups could be omitted from the decision-making in a, in a very localized issue. So I see things like the CRS framework, diversity, equity, inclusion, social-emotional learning, potentially some health issues, as being able to be avoided, and I personally have a lot of concerns around that.
Does anyone have questions? Okay, no votes. Okay, that...
Should I keep going? Okay. Number thirty-seven. Resolve that the NISBA advocate for the adoption of parental rights legislation. Such legislation will protect parents' fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their children, which includes but is not limited to matters of education, medical care, moral, religious, and character training. In addition, parents have the right to be informed about the children's educational programs and should require school districts to promote parental involvement by providing access to curricula and instructional materials and legally protect a parent's right to withdraw a child from portions of school curriculum.
I actually did not put the discussion point on there, but it's, it's a little wordy for me, and it's a little, yeah, so, yes, parental rights are like, but I don't, within rea, I don't know. I don't want to say within reason, because as a parent, I want to make all decisions for my children. But I think adding in all this extra kind of lessens the importance of it, of this? I don't know. I don't, it's, I don't like how it's written, and it's very weird.
I don't think it's that well-written, personally, but I, I agree with you that ultimately, parents are the final gatekeepers for their children, and, and I think that every parent has the right to examine their child's curriculum already. So we should remember that, that, you know, that is already a thing, and what this is doing is kind of taking it to a whole other level. Are we ready to vote?
So if voting, so voting yes or no on this, does it, it would have any impact on parental rights? If, like, say we vote no, it does, doesn't change anything with parental rights whatsoever?
No, no. So this isn't looking to remove parental rights? It's, it's kind of, it, it's actually almost, in my opinion, taking a public education and turning it into a private education. You know, parents have the option of choosing private school for their children if the things that are taught in a public school are not where they want their kids to be. But a public school, the curriculum is state by New York, is set by New York State, and it's the same for all children across New York State. So the assumption is that all children in New York State will have the same curriculum for them. And what this does is kind of changes what is being taught to children on an individual basis, and if you can only imagine the chaos that would ensue. You know, if there's, let's say, not in Antioa, because, but if there were 30 kids in a classroom, and 25 of those children had individual plans that had to do with what they could learn and couldn't learn, that would be, that would be something, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think my kid really wants to learn English, but God, he's gonna have to learn it.
Okay, yes votes? Go ahead. So, a yes vote would say that we are advocating for the adoption of parental rights legislation, and a no vote would say that we are not. And if we just look at the explanation of the Resolutions Committee, which is basically NISBA saying that they don't support this resolution, it says, "The committee expressed their belief that public education, which is guaranteed and open for all, is inherently different from the expectations of a private or homeschooled education. The committee further noted that the current law already provides parents with the right to inspect any instructional material used as part of the educational curriculum for the student." Okay, yes votes? All right, Amanda, that's a no.
Number thirty-eight. Resolve that the NISBA, the New York State, resolve that the NISBA advocate for the reinstatement of the religious or moral objection to immunization. I think they just said NISBA and then spelled it out. So that's why it's confusing, but, yeah.
Anybody have a question on this? Okay, yes votes? Yes votes? That's two, and that...
A yes vote would mean that the parents can opt out.
Yes, correct.
So, okay, thirty-nine. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association oppose legislation that would eliminate the single occupancy zoning for localities.
This was a confusing one. The way they, the way that they worded it was... I think we have a discussion point. No, okay.
But can we explain that better?
Yeah. So, so the, the resolution is that NISBA would oppose legislation that eliminates single occupancy zoning for localities. So they're saying that they support not eliminating them? I don't know. It's, it's written in a very, like...
I think this has, seeing that it's from a bunch of schools on Long Island, there is some, some towns are talking about having people to have multiple dwellings on their property, so they could turn around and build, like, two or three home, two or three apartments on their, on their property.
Yeah, I mean, I just found the wording to be obnoxious, like, overrun with additional students and no additional, additional taxes paid. I, I just don't think that that's accurate.
If they have additional houses, they would get a higher assessment and higher taxes. I don't...
Yeah, I mean, if, I just, I think what they're suggesting is that there only be single occupancy zoning, which would not allow for mother-in-law apartments, or cottages, or studio apartments over the garage. Essentially, they're, they're trying to suggest that only people who can afford to buy a home should be able to be in their school districts. That's kind of my take on it. So, can we vote on this? So a yes vote would mean that you don't want anything other than a single occupancy zoning, right? Or that's a no vote, right? Do we want single occupancy zoning or not? I'm going to no on this.
I'm a no.
Okay. Okay. All right. That's a no, Amanda, I think.
Resolution forty. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association shall oppose any legislation or commissioner regulation that would require any school district or Board of Education to adopt a comprehensive sexuality education for K through 12 students.
If, if this passed, boy, would STD rates skyrocket in New York State. It'd be the chlamydia capital of the world.
Resolution forty-one. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation at the state level that would set limits on the start time for schools to be no earlier than 8:00 AM.
Is there a discussion point on this, or can we just agree to disagree on this? Yeah, yeses? That's a no, Amanda.
Resolution forty-two. Resolve that the New York State School Boards Association hereby petition the New York State Education Department and the commissioner thereof to modify or advocate for changes to any applicable law, rule, or regulations, and allow local school districts the autonomy to develop suitable substitute tests in place of the Regents examinations for those specific children who would otherwise be caused to suffer unnecessary stress, trauma, and anguish at having to take the Regents examinations, allowing the school district to confer a local high school diploma to any such child meeting all other requirements for graduation.
I mean, you know, ostensibly, that sounds like it makes sense, but I can't really imagine local districts having to come up with a test for every child who said that they were traumatized by taking the Regents. And I believe that there are already options in place for children with alternative assessments. So I, go ahead.
In addition to the alternative assessments, New York State is already piloting performance-based learning assessment plans. That's already started, so this is a movement that's going throughout State Education Department, so some options are afoot in a more formalized manner.
Okay, so can we take a vote? Yes? David? So that's a no. Amanda?
Resolution forty-three. Resolve that the New York State Board Association oppose mandates from the State Education Department that require school districts to implement curriculum regarding matters not pertaining to what has traditionally and historically been considered subjects appropriate for public education, or without penalty or forfeiting of any type whatsoever, including monetary. Local districts can, at their sole discretion, opt out of any non-historically or traditionally-based educational curriculum required by the Department of Education.
Oh, wow. This one I found really actually offensive. I'm the son of a Holocaust refugee, and New York State requires, for instance, Holocaust education, which, to some extent, I mean, there's a discussion, I mean, I don't know how, I know it's part of the mandate. And something like that would, would be limited by this proposal, and I strongly oppose it. And I think that, you know, we just have to, there are certain topics that may not fit exactly the three Rs that still should be mandated for, for folks to learn.
Nine point zero eight. We need to appoint a delegate. The Board of Education hereby approves blank to be the Board of Education Voting Delegate for NISBA. Annual business meeting qualifications for being a voting delegate are, the individual must be a member of the Board of Education, or both seats of a NISBA member board, must be able to attend voting delegate orientation on Wednesday, October 12th at 4:00 PM, which is tomorrow, right? Yeah? Or view the recording, so that's, that's fair. Log-in information will be provided. The individual must be able to attend the business meeting virtually on Monday, October 17th at 4:00 PM. Oh, delegates do not need to register for the full NISBA convention in order to participate in the business meeting, as they are two separate NISBA events. We can only have one delegate. So basically, what we're looking for is somebody to go in and vote the way that Amanda recorded our votes. So if anything, that's a no, Antioa is a no. If it's a yes, for, on Amanda's sheet, that's a yes. Who wants to be our delegate? I can't do it, I'm having a baby. So who, who wants to, who wants to be our delegate? You have, but you can watch that virtually. At four.
Just to let you know, those meetings can go for hours until the delegates log off. That's, that's what they, what happens. They have to have a certain quota, a voting quorum of people, and then as the afternoon or evening voting goes on, people leave and cut off. So just because we voted on all these, it's not always going to do it. So sometimes it could take very short, and sometimes it's taken hours. This actually used to be done on the last day of the NISBA conference, and they changed it a couple of years ago when we went remote with COVID, but it's easier, or it's actually better now doing it a separate day, because the person missed all the conference sessions that were the same day as, as this regular meeting.
I see everybody's really excited to volunteer.
I have, I, I can do it.
You can do it?
Yeah.
Valerie. Valerie in the clutch, thank you. So we would like to register Valerie Story as our NISBA delegate. May I have a first? Trustee Wallace, second. Trustee Bishop. All in favor? Thank you, Valerie. Item nine point zero nine. The Board of Education hereby approves a professional learning plan for 2022, 2024. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Taylor. Any comments or questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Oh, that's where our break was supposed to be. Look at that, okay. Item eleven point zero one. Is this where Schedule U is? Yeah. Okay. I have read the Schedule U, and it appears to be in order. Thank you, Ms. Allison. The Board hereby approves item numbers eleven point zero two to eleven point zero eight. May I have a first, please? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Bishop. All in, any comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And that was personnel consent. Item eleven point zero two. The personnel agenda, no, I'm already past. Twelve zero one. Thank you. The Board hereby approves item numbers twelve point zero two to twelve point zero three. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop. Comments or questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Let's just do it this way. Does anybody have anything to, to report from their committees? No? Okay. Does the Board have any old business? New business? Trustee Lynch?
I always, forgive me, I never know if it's old or new, but I just want to thank the Director of IT for installing the IT, or the Wi-Fi here at Phoenisha Elementary. It is a game changer! And I really want to thank you all for your support of the PTA and making that happen so quickly. Thank you, Superintendent McLaren. I was just going to ask if we could have signage prominently put up in the school and even on the outside of the school for the field usage as well? Just curious, because there is a password that's also required, so just want, and there's several IT, or, sorry, Wi-Fi channels that you can choose from your phone, so I just was hoping that that could happen as well.
We'll discuss it and get back to you.
Thank you.
I had a question from a neighbor, and I thought it was worth just, you know, bringing up...
senior citizen. And apparently, New York State has changed the exemption for senior citizens. So I think they can earn up to fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars without paying taxes. Now, that's for, that's basically a permission, they permit each town to, to implement that, from what I gather. And it's not, it's not like it's a across-the-board decision, but it's a, you know, it allows each town to exempt more, because I think it was about twenty-six or seven thousand, and I could be wrong, maybe Ms. Claire, LeClaire might have some better information about that. But I just wondered if someone could explain better how that works and who, who ultimately makes the decision whether we can give people who are earning, let's say, in the thirties, a senior citizen a, a break?
That comes from the towns. What, what the school has done is authorize the veterans exemption. A few years ago, when that came down from the state, schools were allowed to either approve it or disapprove it and I believe Antioch did approve it. But that, the senior exemptions, you, you apply each year to the town. And it's based on, based on your income, it's based on, you know, a bunch of different things. There's, there's the, there's the senior star, there's a senior enhanced star, there's, there's a bunch of different exemptions out there, but you have to qualify for them and that's why you have to apply for them every year through the town.
And is there a, where would someone who has questions about that process, you know, go? Would they just go, is there, is there, is the, some, an advocate here in Antioch who can help at all?
It varies for each town. That's why each town has their own assessor. If they call the school, we can give them the phone number for the assessor of their town.
Do you feel like you've got what you need, David?
Absolutely.
Any other old business or new business? New business? Trustee Bishop?
Yes, I'm gonna be very brief. I think, I'm, I'm not sure if everybody received their login information today for Super Evale. But if you, Amanda, did everybody get those? All board trustees?
I received an email saying that all board trustees did indeed get them.
Okay, great, thank you. So, and then I, I did, you know, I mean, you guys know that I went to that Board Officers workshop and one section of the day was really talking about superintendent evaluation. I am absolutely not an expert at all, so I did reach out to Superintendent McLaren today just for a, a little clarification about how, how this all works. So she wrote back and, you know, explained to me that using Super Evale, that she would submit, she would be submitting her goals and choosing competencies and that she would be basing her goals, she'd like to model her goals after our goals. And that once she has her goals and her competencies submitted, then she can start attaching documents, you know, to, I don't know, I, I know that when we spoke with Dr. Bill about this, he, he called it an evidence binder, but it's much more than an evidence binder. And so she would be attaching documents like the Friday updates and things like that that are just, you know, showing us that she's making progress toward her goal, her goals. And so closer to the end of the school year, we would all submit our evaluations and then a final report would be written and we would discuss that with her. Superintendent McLaren?
I just wanted to insert in there, toward, in the end of the spring, I would review and I do my own self-evaluation and then each individual board member gets to look at how I have evaluated myself in each category and respond either by affirming that you agree with that particular rating or you can rate higher or lower. And there's room for each individual trustee to provide comments and feedback as well. So it ends up being a very comprehensive document.
We use Super Evale and I know I've talked to Bob, he was willing to come down and do a presentation to the board for this because there, they have changed it and there's some new things that I hadn't even known about. So it's something that is, he, we'll see him next week up at, or next week or whenever we're in NISBA. We'll just, we can discuss more with him, having him come down and show us the platform, which is, it's a phenomenal thing and we pay money for it, but he could probably do it virtually, but it has to be done during a board meeting. We, we have no longer, we can no longer do virtual things.
At the, at the NISBA training that I went to, they said that they could come down any ti, that they could come anytime to, you know, teach us how to use Super Evale, that, that they could sometime, some districts request a whole day, some request a half day, some request an hour or two. I'm not suggesting that we do that. But yeah, I don't think, they, they were not implying that it would be done during a board meeting.
We've had them come down and do it during board meetings. I know other districts too that they do it. We can do it another time, but we have to do it in person because we can no longer do remote meetings.
So I just wanted to fill you in on what little I know with Superintendent McLaren's help and, and trustee Stories. So just, you know, something that we need to get started on as soon as we can.
Any other new business or old business? Any business? Wait, 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 we have to do RFIs. Anyone with an RFI, a request for information from the superintendent? Nope? The next meeting is October 25th, 2022 at the middle school, high school. First to adjourn, trustee Story. Second, trustee Bishop. Comments, questions, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.